Good evening. Happy Earth Day, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting for April 22nd to order. City Clerk, can you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Robert Parkhurst.
President.
Mayor Pro Tem Christine Lowe.
President.
Councilmember Edward Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Jean Goss.
Here.
And Councilmember Kelly Crebs.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum this evening.
Great, thank you very much. All right. Councilmember Goss, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Inspiration?
I'd be happy to. Please rise if you're able. Raise your flag. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You're seated. So when you're charged to do the inspiration for a meeting, you want to try to set a positive tone. And lately, we've been doing poems for inspirations. I found an interesting little poem, so I thought I'd share with everyone tonight. It's titled "Things Work Out", and the poet is Edgar Albert Guest. Because it rains when we wish it wouldn't, because men do what they often shouldn't, because crops fail and plans go wrong, some of us grumble all day long. But somehow, in spite of the care and doubt, it seems at last that things work out. Because we lose where we'd hoped to gain, because we suffer a little pain, because we must work when we'd like to play, some of us whimper along the way. But somehow, as day always follows the night, most of our troubles work out all right. Because we cannot forever smile, because we must trudge in the dust awhile, because we think that the way is long, some of us whimper that life's all wrong. But somehow, we live and our sky grows bright, and everything seems to work out all right. So bend to your trouble and meet your care, for the clouds must break and the sky grow fair. Let the rain come down as it must and will, but keep on working and hoping still, for in spite of the grumblers who stand about, somehow, it seems, all things work out. On that positive note, I turn the floor back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Goss. That was very nice. All right. So now, we'll need to get a report out from closed session. Our lawyer via teleconference, because he's sick at home. Can you go ahead, Attorney Gargosian, and give us a report out from closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. City Council met in closed session on a matter regarding public employment, and no reportable action was taken.
Thank you very much. We will definitely try to minimize your time tonight, because I hate to say it, but I'll be honest, you sound horrible. So I am glad that you were resting up, and hopefully, we won't go too late tonight. All right. So now we get to... Oh, you know, I skipped over approval of meeting agenda. Do we have any modifications to tonight's agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
I would actually like to make a change. Sorry, I was pausing for everyone else. I would like to move Consent Item C to a discussion item. And I am agnostic on where it is on the discussion.
Well, I see staff and at least one trustee, so if we could put it earlier rather than later.
I think that would be very fair.
I think that would be fair.
To make it the first discussion item?
Do we want to put it before the public hearing?
I think maybe even before the public hearing. If we could do that out of order, either City Clerk or City Attorney?
Yes, as long as we're allowed to. I think that's a great suggestion.
Yes.
Right, so we'll go ahead and then move Consent Item C to the first item after consent.
I will amend my motion to approve the agenda as amended. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Now we'll look for a motion for approving resolutions and ordinances by title only.
Some moved.
Second.
We're shy today.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. We've got the minutes from April 8th. I sent in a small change to them. Were there any other edits or changes to the minutes? Great. Then I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
We need a motion.
Oh, you need it, sorry.
I can't move.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Mayor and City Council reports. Why don't we start right to left tonight? So Councilmember Garcia, would you go first?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll keep it quick. April 12th, obviously, was the Wisteria Festival. I attended the Wisteria Festival, and just want to give hats off to the chamber, the businesses, staff. I think it was PD that put on the car show. Is that right? The car show. Everybody, it was a wonderful, wonderful weather. I didn't go to the vine this year. I heard it was about two weeks past its prime. As we can see out here in our rotunda, there's a lot of blossoms on the ground. But I... We... They packed out the street. There were a lot of vendors. I think all of us, or most of us, were there. You witnessed that. So I was... One of the best days of the year for this fine city. So I was very pleased. And then on the 17th, as the alternate to the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments, I attended the SGV COG meeting, and really, nothing to report there. The attorney is outgoing, so we said farewell to the attorney, and a warm welcome to the new attorney for the COG. But the COG is still very active, and really, really, really focusing on regional issues that affect our city. So I'm glad we're part of it, and I'm glad we're participating.
Fantastic. All right.
All right. So on April 10th, I went to a really fantastic meeting with Sheriff Luna, the Special Assistant to Legislative Affairs for our DA's office, Michelle Hennessy, and also in attendance was the DA from Sacramento, as well as our current DA, Hotchman. And it was a meeting about Prop 36. And it was a pretty fantastic... If you're not sure what that is, Prop 36 is about the new fentanyl laws, also about smash and grab and shoplifting, that instead of one crime, it's now all combined. So a person doesn't have individual misdemeanor amounts. All of the amounts that they've stolen are now combined, so it can be a felony. It also has other alternatives to prison for people who've been convicted of more than two drug-related crimes. So I'll go over it more later, but I really thought it was very, very informative, and it was really neat to see what Sacramento is doing, and seeing how our leaders are coming together to try to react to this. And then on 4/12, of course, yes, the Wisteria Festival was amazing. The auto show was really great. I loved seeing all the cars and the categories that they had. On 4/14, we had a special library meeting, which we'll hear later on about. One thing I want to express is that we get so many great services for free through our libraries. If you ever have to do academic research for academic presentations and such, and if you need to look up veterans, those are all federally funded programs that will be going away. So you'll hear more about how do we try to prevent that. And the Friends of the Library will be sponsoring the 60th Annual Sierra Madre Art Fair, March 3rd, and May 3rd and May 4th, at Memorial Park, from 9:30 to 5:00. Sixty artists are participating. Laura Wamsgans, Wamsgans, is one of the landscape oil painters, who's been participating in the fair for 15 years now. Live music will be in the band show. And unfortunately, we have not had the pancake breakfast the same day lately, so maybe someday we can come back with that, since that's one of our themes on our Rose Parade. I mean, our Rose float this upcoming year. So I'm moving forward with that. I want to agendize that next year. And that's it.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Goss?
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Garcia, for filling in for me at COG. Had a work commitment last Thursday. I also missed the Planning Commission meeting, but I did watch the tape yesterday, and Planning Commission was very deep in the noise ordinance, which we're all concerned about. It's been two hours on it, got very detailed, very impressive work. It's not done yet, but when it does, we'll see it here on council. I went to the Wisteria Festival as well, and I think what Councilmember Garcia said is absolutely true. It was a beautiful day and loved it. The cars were amazing. And our Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember Crebs did a wonderful job handing out trophies to the winners of the car show. So all in all, it was just an amazing event. That's all we got.
I will just add, I also went to the Wisteria Festival. The only thing I will add is I wanted to thank city staff for also putting on the Earth Day Festival in Memorial Park. It was, I think, a great idea to combine it. I really think that it probably elevated exposure to our Earth Day and all of the folks that participated in that. So that was great. I think it created an end-to-end event, and I really wanted to also extend my gratitude, and really was impressed with the chamber and the different things that they've tried this year. I think people universally felt like a Saturday was a positive change. You know, maybe we cut the difference in between, given that now we've gone from not in bloom to maybe past bloom. But you know, that, these are discussions for future time. But I think it was really a lot of great... I think people liked music in different places, and so I really thought it was an innovative approach to something that we've done for a long time. And I think, you know, there was a lot of positive feedback, and wanted to give that shout-out to our staff for the Earth Day presentation. And then, the other thing I wanted to mention is... Oh, and Councilmember Goss and I have been involved in our city manager recruitment, so we've been doing that in the interim time as well. And that is my report.
Thank you so much. All right. I don't have a huge amount to add. Everyone did a fabulous job in talking about the Wisteria Festival. I think that the two things that I walked away with, one is that this is probably one of the best-attended Wisteria festivals that I've seen in a very long time. Streets were packed, so huge kudos to city staff, as well as the chamber for everything they did. I love the idea of getting the local businesses having a booth out front, so that not... So they drew the audience, or the attendees, into their own businesses there, and it was also a great way to get a number of businesses to join the chamber. So that was really good. And the music was just fantastic. Having that in two locations was really good. So kudos to everyone that put that on. That was great. Yesterday was... I went to the Los Angeles City Selection Committee. So this is to help fill positions within the county and state. And so, at the City Selection Committee, we nominated several mayors and recommended them to the State Senate Rules Committee to be considered for appointment to the California Coastal Commission. So a number of the cities there along the coast were recommended to the Rules Committee, and one or two of them will be put on the Coastal Commission. We also nominated our local mayor of Duarte to the Local Agency Formation Commission for LA County. And so the LAFCO, as it's known, really, the mission of it is to encourage orderly growth, promote logical formation and determination of local agency boundaries, discourage urban sprawl, and preserve open space and prime agricultural lands. So that's all I have to report. But now we've got city announcements and events. So last week was National Public Safety Dispatcher Week. This week took a moment to shine a well-deserved spotlight on the incredible individuals who serve as our community's first line of communication emergencies, our dispatchers. These men and women are calm voices, are the calm voices you hear when you dial 911, often during the most frightening, confusing, or painful moments of your life. They're trained to respond quickly, think clearly, and act decisively, all while offering compassionate and calm reassurance. Dispatchers are not just answering calls. They're coordinating lifesaving responses, guiding people through medical emergencies, and making sure our police, fire, and EMS teams get to where they need to be safely and efficiently. They are essential to public safety, even if they are rarely seen. Today, I want to extend our deepest gratitude to those dispatchers. Your professionalism, grace under pressure, and unwavering dedication do not go unnoticed. You are the invisible hand that holds emergency response together, and your impact reaches every corner of our community. I'll also add, you know, that these people were indispensable during our four natural disaster events, the winds, the fire, and the two flood events that we had. And so please, join me in thanking these extraordinary public services. And to our dispatchers, thank you for your outstanding service, your strength, and your commitment to excellence. All right. This Saturday, April 26th, Athens is going to host a Free Compost Event at Sierra Vista Park, 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Flyers in the back of the table. So thank you very much, Athens, for bringing back our waste in a form that we can use it, just in time for all of our gardens. The library is having an open house next Tuesday, April 29th, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. From robots to sewing, the library is more than just books. Even in their temporary space, they have plenty to offer. There will be light refreshments provided, and maybe a prize or two. Drop in, hang out, and discover more at our local library. We have a new website luncheon learn. So we have two opportunities to provide feedback on our new website development. On Monday, May 6th, at 11:30, our new communications coordinator, Sophia Conscious, will be hosting a luncheon learn at the Hart Park House, intended for our senior population. And then the second town hall will be on May 14th at 6:00 PM, also at the Hart Park Senior Center. These are great opportunities to welcome Sophia and share your ideas on how to make our new website more user-friendly, accessible, and responsive to the needs of our community. Whether it's about layout, navigation, content clarity, or new features you'd like to see, your input matters. I'll just say that this is a new department that they are calling Taco. So if you're going to go to either of those, you might get some tacos, in one way or another. Last announcement we've got is the Community Yard Sale. It's going to take place on June 7th, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM, at Memorial Park. So to register as a vendor, please call Community Services at (626) 355-5278. And that concludes the city announcements. All right. We've got the Public Participation Code of Conduct. It is here. It is on the back of all your comment cards. I will just recommend anyone who is planning to make public comments to take a look at it. It is kind of our guiding principles for getting public comments. All right. And speaking of which, now it is time for public comments for items not on the agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have any comment cards for items not on the agenda tonight?
We do, Mr. Mayor. We have two speaker cards at this time. The first of the second is from Carol Parker.
The first and the second?
No, that's the first, and then the second.
First of the second, got it.
The second.
Ms. Parker, please.
Thank you. My name is Carol Parker. I live on Mariposa. I'm here for Debbie Sheridan. But before I read what she needs to say, I want to thank you all here for not... For everything that you just said. Plus, your fire and ambulance is fantastic. Unfortunately, I've had to call them three times in the last two years, and they're so wonderful and kind. They move fast. They're... There's no words, really. I've wanted to give them candy. I wanted to send them something. The same men that helped me weren't there the second time and the third time. People have said to me, "Why can't I have an ambulance, Mr. Sierra Madre?" I said, "'Cause you're not at my house getting sick." So I do want that to be noticed. Debbie Sheridan, Valley Vista, is unable to be here tonight. And she says, "I'm sorry, I can't be here. First, I would like to thank you for doing what you did to keep us safe from the devastating fire, from the aftermath with the resulting mud flow, and for keeping us informed. I am speaking tonight to urge you to continue to put us, the residents, in our health and well-being first." The front page of the L.A. Times on April 12th headlined, "High Lead Levels in Soil Near Eaton Blaze." According to the Army Corps of Engineers and Rue Associates, the experts testing the soil, 47% of the area beyond the burn scare exceeded California's health limit for lead and other chemicals, and in areas downwind of the fire. Now Victory Park, next to Pasadena High School, has been closed because of the toxins that remain there. This fire jumped from the monastery property onto neighbor's property. These neighbors had already experienced dust-borne chemicals from the monastery when these chemicals were sprayed on their land and denuded the vegetation. I am asking you to hold developer New Urban West accountable before they start their building. And City Council, please use your due diligence by making sure there are no toxins left to be stirred up and harm us. You've even banned leaf blowers. Thank you. And surely, you can legally make sure we are safe, as you always have. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, the second speaker is Brandon Stansell.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff, and folks of Sierra Madre. I have to say, the mayor did such a wonderful job that he stole my thunder. I was here to announce the compost event, so I'll just kind of do it briefly again. This Saturday, as the mayor eloquently stated, that we are having our compost event, April 26th, from 8:00 to 12:00 at Sierra Vista Park. Please, come one, come all. Come as many times as you can to collect the compost. As like the mayor stated, we are taking the trash, taking the food and organics, and giving it back to the community. So I really want to see a lot of participation there for that event. And with it being Earth Day and Earth Month, just want to highlight some of the things that we have participated throughout Earth Month. We were at Wisteria Festival and Earth Day, which was a great event. This was my first Wisteria. And so it was really cool to just participate in Earth Day, see the people, and then walk through the Wisteria halls. I work with the chamber often, and to see the plan come to life was a really cool experience for myself. And then, finally, we did also a presentation here on Monday for the Sierra Madre Cub Scouts PAC 110. We did an Earth Day presentation, kind of just doing our sorting game. That is a popular event. We're just showing how to properly sort your trash. And we did it right here in the chamber, or in the council chambers, and it was fantastic. And so, just want to highlight some of the things we've been doing for Earth Month, and want to continue to celebrate. And we're wrapping it up here on this Saturday, the 26th. So I hope to see you there. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. Brandon, thank you. And I will say that the compost has gotten better. I don't know if it's because you came around, or...
Oh, I like to say so. I'll take the credit, thank you.
But procedurally, for our residents... So I know in the past, and I haven't read anything on it this time around, they need to bring their own receptacle. You can't just like fill up the back of a pickup truck first time around. So for our residents that are watching, that are here, can you explain the procedure?
Yeah, so we have here on our flyers, and I'm not sure if it's on their flyers that the city created here, but with our compost event, we like to have a sturdy type of container for your compost. We don't recommend putting it in trucks or cars, but if that's all you have, I think we can make an exception. We're not going to turn people away. But we like to truly recommend that you bring something kind of a sturdy type of container or can for the compost.
Very helpful, thank you.
I had a future question. Do we do the hazardous waste drop-offs anymore?
So we had one scheduled for earlier. I think it was around the time the fires started. So we had postponed it at the time. We're still working with staff. Whenever we want to circle back... Oops, excuse me. Whenever we want to circle back on that, we're waiting on staff to just give us the assistance, and we will continue when as necessary. But we did have one scheduled, but for unfortunate circumstances.
Does that include hazardous waste and e-waste?
Correct.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Yeah.
And the flyers that we do have in the back of the room, I'm seeing them here. There is a lot of really good information on it. As was stated, it's city residents. Bring your shovels, dolly, and sturdy containers. No plastic bags or cardboard boxes. Drive-up only. No container larger than 32 gallons. And gloves and eye protection recommended. So this is here in the back of the room, and I also assume that it is on the website available for folks, so...
But you could come back, right?
Yes, you can come back as many times as you can. We're open 8:00 to 12:00. So as many times as you would like. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I also would like to make a call-out. Ms. Parker had mentioned some of the concerns with the high lead levels. And just our... One of our... I can't remember the award he got, Mr. Meek. He and the softball and the baseball leagues have voluntarily sampled the soil at all of the fields where baseball and softball are being played, and they're testing them right now for high levels of contaminates. So I want to say thank you to all of the folks there that are hoping to make that happen and keep our community safe. Are we... That's all the public comments?
That's all the comment cards we have, Mr. Mayor.
All the comment cards, great. All right, so now we'll move on to presentations. So I want to invite up Susan, is it Lesniak? To talk about National Organ Donor Month. And then, I've got a proclamation for you.
Stand here, or there?
There is perfect.
Okay. And yes, you presented my name correctly. Thank you so much for being consistent for this whole entire council and for the mayor to also, you know, to be our partner with One Legacy and to help us with our outreach for Donate Life Month. I wanted to give you a little bit of background. I found out that I had cardiomyopathy when I was 33, and that started a 25-year journey of cardiologist visits, and testing, and medications, procedures. And what happens with cardiomyopathy is basically your heart is slowly dying, and you go into heart failure. So by the time of age 59, I was already in the hospital, in and out, in and out. And I had been going to UCLA for evaluation. And I was blessed with a donor heart that matched me. So I stand here with total gratitude, and the fact that I can come back year after year because you're continuing with your partnership, we really appreciate it. And I wanted to also say that for One Legacy, it's your local organ procurement organization that covers seven counties. So there's over 20 million people in those counties that we're trying to get our outreach out to. And the company has grown substantially, with 500 employees and 160 folks like me that are volunteers to go out and do the outreach. The outreach goes to high schools, to DMVs, many hospitals. They also do in-house training for all the medical staff from all their partners and so forth. So it's very exciting. I learn a lot of new things every time I go in there. They have also had the Azusa Office, which I told you about last year, and Redlands, those are transplant centers. But they opened up some satellite offices because the extra employees can go geographically further, from Bakersfield and Santa Barbara, all the way down to Indio and Palm Springs. It's a huge coverage area. But in 2024, they did over 900 outreach events. And it's similar to these and what I have mentioned. Lots of community events. And I keep putting the Wisteria Festival on the list, but it's always in April. So it's very busy, because we're out there doing so many. So I went to the Wisteria Festival with my Donate Life t-shirt on, just to beat my own little advertising. And I love the festival. Lots of great arts and crafts there. We have a run-walk on the next Saturday at the Azusa Pacific College that I wanted your folks and residents to know about, in case anybody's athletic and wants to come. You could still sign up. In case anybody's athletic and wants to come, you could still sign up. Go to onellegacy.org on our website. You'll see a link for that. You'll also have all kinds of information about organ donation there and jobs, opportunities for anybody in your community that is looking to go in to anything related that they have there, whether it's IT, whether it's, you know, social working, uh, medical training and so. So there's a lot of opportunity there. And in 2024, with the outreach that we've been doing, they actually spoke to ten thousand four hundred and eighty-seven families about donations at hospitals. It's a very critical time and a very traumatic time for these families. Um, we were happy to get seven hundred and thirty-nine organ donors, which gifted one thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine organs for transplantation to save lives. Also, there were one thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven bone donors and over a hundred and fifty thousand tissue grafts. This is just for our area in the L.A., greater L.A. area. It's not the whole country because, you know, we're twenty percent. Um, and there's also something new that's been out there. I don't know if anybody noticed this in the news, but on the East Coast, they've been doing pig heart and kidney transplantations. And maybe that will be a wave as science progresses to help with the shortage that we have. So I'm just standing here to say that I'm very grateful, and I appreciate it that your, um, proclamations will all be displayed at the run walk. And I also wanted to let Marcus talk a little bit.
I was trying to dance with you.
So, yeah. I'm trying to recruit him. So this is going to be his year. He'll be an ambassador with us.
Evening, council, mayor, uh, mayor pro tem. Thank you guys for this honor. Um, two years ago, I was a lucky recipient of a kidney. Uh, got one, one owner, low miles, working out great for me. This is a great organization. Uh, a lot of people don't know that they're in every hospital, um, all over Southern California. And by their reach, uh, they provide the gift of life. So I'm a recipient of that. I am very blessed. Um, and again, I want to be out, be here, standing here without you guys, One Legacy, and my coworkers who give me the support, because it is a team effort. And, uh, I thank you guys for giving this proclamation every year so far. Um, this year, we put the flag up high in front of the fire station. And as long as I'm here, hopefully, we continue to do that. So we thank you for your work and, uh, thank you for coming here to Sierra Madre.
Thank you.
So, so before I come up and give the proclamation, so, you know, i- if you don't have it, you know, everyone knows that on, on your license, like right over here, you can have the, the donor sticker on it, uh, when you get it renewed. Um, if you haven't done that, um, is there a way, what's the way to go ahead and, and become a donor? If you, if you weren't at the, at the last time that you renewed your license?
Well, there is a link through the onellegacy.org, but the main, um, one is, um, actually, let me just give it to you. It's Donate Life. Let me, it's, hold on, I, I don't want to misspell. DonateLifeCalifornia.org. And for Spanish-speaking, it's DonVidaCalifornia.org. Um, there are some wording changes at the DMV, uh, which is fine. When you go to these websites and you go directly, you can pick and choose what you choose to donate or not. You can also under-register yourself if something changes in your life that you don't feel comfortable doing it anymore. And that's the important thing. And more, more so is, once you decide to put the pink dot on your license, please tell all your family, friends throughout your life. Because you start when you're seventeen or eighteen with a license, and you never mention it. And, you know, thirty, forty, fifty years down the road, the question comes up. So just keep that in mind.
Thank you. Now, let me come on up.
Okay.
So one of the great honors as mayor is I get to read out these proclamations. Um, so, whereas organ, eye, tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to those in need. More than a hundred thousand individuals nationwide and more than twenty thousand in California are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list. Whereas, a single individual's donation, uh, uh, of a heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestine can save up to eight lives. Organ donors saved more than forty-two thousand lives last year, the most ever. Any person can register to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor regardless of age or medical condition. Whereas, California residents can sign up to be an organ, eye, and tissue donors when applying for, replying for or renewing their driver's license or ID cards at the California Department of Motor Vehicles or by visiting DonateLifeCalifornia.org. Now therefore be it resolved that in recognition of National Donate Life Month, the month of April 2025, is hereby proclaimed DMV slash Donate Life Month in the city of Sierra Madre. And in doing so, we encourage all Californians to check yes online or when applying for or renewing their driver's license, I, or ID card at the DMV. Presented this twenty-second day of April by the Sierra Madre City Council, Mayor Robert Parkhurst, Mayor Pro Tem Christine Lowe, council members Edward Garcia, Jean Goss, and Kelly Krebs. So, there we go. We can go ahead and get a picture?
All right, you're in the middle.
Okay. All right. I'll be in the middle.
Yes, there we go. Thank you so much. Thank you for being here. All right, our next presentation is from Kurt Knopp. Uh, and he's going to give us the annual YMCA presentation.
Good evening. Thank you very much. And it's a pleasure to be here, mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of council. Thank you for having us. Um, thanks very much for your help, James. I appreciate it. We'd like to kind of walk through this deck representation. We'll do it, uh, quickly. You all have a copy of it, I think, in front of you as well, um, as we do have the ability to, to show some of it on the monitor. There we have it. But before I do that, I'd just really like to not only acknowledge, but I'd, I'd really like to say thank you to Jose and his team for all the support and the interaction. I've had the pleasure of working with all of you for the last two and a half years. And I would say from Jose to Laura to the rest of the team, Ted, since he's been with us, James, really the entire group. Um, it's not a politically correct statement to just make that, but I, I really have enjoyed the opportunity. It's been very professional, but it's also been very collaborative, so. And you as council as well. So thank you very much for the opportunity. We wish you well. We will miss you, uh, city. I, but there's no question about it, city manager. We will miss you, but thank you again for everything. Um, I'd also like to acknowledge, before we get going further, the incredible volunteers and the people that really helped make the Y go in our community. Um, during not just the crisis, and we'll talk a little bit about fire relief, over fifteen hundred people signed up to volunteer and help us with that process over the course of the, really, the first ninety days. So it was incredible outreach and support. I'd also like to thank the chair of our Board of Managers, Gordon Clark, who's here this evening, as well as our Senior Director of Operations, Dan Powell. And then the person that I rely most heavily on day in and day out, Sheena Inman, our Senior Director of Programs is here as well. So thank you for that opportunity to acknowledge them. Um, the number of types of programs that we've had, if you kind of have to go to the next slide, James, I'd really appreciate it. And I don't want to walk through each and, and read this report to you, but I, you have it and can take a look at it. I just think it's important for everybody to acknowledge and understand the variety of programming that the Y provides the community. And I think everybody's aware of it, but sometimes you don't see it. We are so much more than swims and gyms, and I think you've all seen that, uh, not only in the last three months, but hopefully well beyond that in terms of what we provide the community. If you go to the next slide, we talked a little bit about aquatics. Some of the things to highlight, um, talked about serving over four hundred unique individuals in our swim lessons program, water fitness classes for those that know people that participate in that. One of the most active things and one of the most engaged components we have every morning, Monday through Friday at nine AM. Uh, we grew the number of swimmers in our swim crew, which is effectively the, if you all remember, the Sierra Madre Dolphins. It's not back in name and spirit, but it's getting closer to being a reality. Um, look for that, I'd say, in the latter part of 2025. And we talked about the number of people. We provide over fifty hours of lap swim opportunity in a given week. So lots of opportunities for people to, to have this be their health option of choice. Um, when we get to the pool special event slide, I think we might have a little audio that goes along with it, with the video. We go to the next slide. Let's see if we can get this up for you. Because I think it talks about one of the most exciting. We having a little technical difficulty? We'll see if it gets her. There you go. Guess I'll do a little running play-by-play. For those of you that are familiar with the eighth grade, um, Float the Boat Program, it takes place every spring. It's coming up here at the end of May. And it is an amazing STEM-related opportunity where young students in Mr. Dev's class are constructing cardboard and duct tape boats. Uh, they all have a walk-up song that plays while they're also in the pool. Uh, it's really an amazing community event. This last year, I think we had about, I don't know, I would say eighty-five or eighty-six different, um, boats that tried to make their way. Almost ninety percent of them make it, only if you fail. You'll see one coming up that doesn't quite make it. So apologies to the builders of that structure. There it goes. Um, but, uh, they all have a walk-up song. It's really an amazing fun event. And after many, several years, because of COVID, uh, it had not been held, and eighth graders missed that opportunity, but we've had it back. And this will be the third year in a row that we've been able to host that event. So that's a special event. We also talk about the Sierra Madre Elementary School Fifth Grade Promotion Pool Party, the Sierra Madre Public Library Challenger Event. Nice to see the L.A. and crew here tonight, which we love at the end of summer. And then also the Fourth of July Family Rec Swim is a big part of that. And our Community Rec Swim, which I think you all were very happy that we offered that opportunity for non-members to participate in throughout the summer. And that will be back. We go to the next slide, please. Um, youth programming. Heck, we didn't, uh, we, we should have posted highest and mightiest in here, the opportunity, the new exciting opportunity, and council member Goss, as well as the rest of the council. I know you're excited about the fact that it looks like the MOU has been signed relative to the PUSD and the city to utilize Sierra Madre Middle School Gym. And we'll be running programming starting very soon. Basketball as well as volleyball programming throughout the course of the year. So we're excited to provide that opportunity. Talked about the youth sports that we provide on a year-round basis. Youth classes, variety of youth classes, dance, martial arts, PE. We also have an introduction to acting class. We have an introduction to cooking class that we offer at the center. It's really a, a lot of fun to be able to offer those programs. Um, adventure guides, family fitness classes, and summer sleepaway camp as well. Um, we're talking about healthy lifestyles. I'm sorry, I'm roaring ahead here a little bit. Those in the audience, I apologize. Or actually, teen programs. Let's go there. Um, we have monthly teen nights. We have Get Summer, which again is part of our agreement that you folks have, uh, encouraged us to participate in, the, the teen programming, free teen memberships for the summer, where from June went on. There goes a little intro. I think this, this is our Model United Nations Program across all of L.A. County. Model UN is an introduction to folks about what's going on in, in, uh, throughout the world. So they understand what democracies look like and how they're different and how other nations. Uh, it's an amazing program for middle schoolers to participate in. We had the pleasure at our Good Friday Breakfast, which brings the entire L.A. Metro Y together, to hear from the Secretary General, the Junior Secretary General, an eighth grader from South Pasadena. I, I hope he's the next presidential candidate. Uh, he couldn't get there fast enough, frankly. It was just amazing to talk about, uh, his poise and his presence. Um, he's actually, uh, he's been in the country, I think, eight years, but he is an adoptee from Uganda who has just immersed himself in, uh, in culture and definitely when it comes to civics. Um, we also have, uh, our Model Legislation in Court, which is a program for ninth through twelfth graders, which we are absolutely bound and determined to grow rapidly. We'd like you all to be part of that process and to be either guests that come and speak to that group, or we'd love to invite them to chambers at some point in time and have them learn about the rule of law. MLC or Model Legislation in Court, the Y has been part of that program for the better part of eighty years. And that's an interesting program that finishes their, uh, year usually August through February and ends up in Sacramento where they make arguments on the floor of the Capitol Building. So it's an amazing program. Um, again, so, something that brings together twenty-five hundred high school students throughout California to participate in that civic process, to understand and learn more about California state legislature and government. Um, we've had the Pasadena City College Middle School Math Program, Get Summer Free Teen Memberships we talked about. We also are hosting, and I would make it as a side, again, it comes out of the fire relief, but the Avacyn School, for those of you who might be familiar with Avacyn School. Avacyn is a charter school that was utilizing a PUSD site in Alzadina that was completely destroyed because of the fires, the Eaton Fire. And Avacyn is now actually utilizing the Youth Activity Center upstairs. Three days a week, they're there, Tuesday through Thursday, with forty-five students, K through six. That's their new, not one-room schoolhouse, because there are a couple of breakout rooms. Those that know the Youth Activity Center well, but they're able to use three spaces up there. And it's been, uh, an amazing opportunity to have those kids still continue their education this year, and they'll be there through the end of, or through the middle part of, of June. Um, healthy lifestyles. Talking about group fitness classes, whether it's yoga, Pilates, strength, and cycling. This last year, we've had over eight hundred unique individuals participate in that program. Our gym facilities, whether it's cardio or whether it's weight training, you can do that. Lunch and Learn, I hope it, well, I don't know if it's a trademarked, a trademark name. We all, we too participate in Lunch and Learn programs. Um, in this last year, we've hosted a Women's Heart Health, which is a day that was amazingly, uh, amazing that it was super rainy. We had a number of people who showed up. I don't know if it was the Diane salad that was offered, or if it was the, the discussion, but whatever the case is, it was amazingly well-attended. Um, the next slide we have is about Fourth of July and that weekend. So I'll let you listen to a little music if James pumps that up, or you can hear it in the background. We had the pleasure this last year, uh, at the invitation of the Sierra Madre Events Committee to host the, uh, event on the evening of the third, the Kid Zone, um, or the Fun Zone. We're looking forward to doing that again. Uh, there are lots of inflatables, but not inflatables that kids are jumping up and down on. That's a risk issue that the Y doesn't get into, but I tell you, people had, the kids, we had almost four hundred kids participate in that this last year. We are looking to have even more this coming year and are offering an opportunity for those victims or the survivors of fire relief to participate in that evening at no charge to the participants. So, um, we, that'll also be a twenty-dollar, twenty-dollar cost for others that, that aren't in that situation. And then the Fourth of July, a lot of rest for our team and staff. We go from doing the Fun Zone to doing the Fun Run. Um, we're, we're bright and up and at it in the morning. We enjoyed being the lead on that this last year, and we look forward to doing that again this year with another year of experience under our belt. Um, staff training on the overview slide. Thank you, sir. Um, just talk about annual all-staff training, our monthly aquatics and service trainings, our monthly aquatic, uh, essentially emergency trainings to make sure we're poised and prepared. Give you an idea also, from a guard standpoint, we do over twenty checks on a monthly basis just to see if we're prepared, what are the numbers? We're, we're, we're constantly monitoring that. We check the condition of the pool water in the pool, um, multiple times, up to four times a day, so that we're constantly aware of the conditions taking place in, in the pool. Um, we do safety meetings, accident incident reports. It can assure you that we're, whether it be beasties or, or slips and falls, we cover the gamut there. We hope to eliminate the number of things that you folks end up hearing about. Um, work project requests to the city. Can't not talk about the elevator repair bit, but that's still another issue. So we'll, we'll, we'll move right past. We, we really reach out, whenever we do reach out to, whether it be our new phone staff, they've been super helpful with tree trimming. I want to, uh, thank Brandon and his team from Waste Management relative to this year, especially when we've been doing fire relief distribution and the incredible volume of trash that was created by that and their immediate responses. Um, again, community feedback, we talked about how we, we, we are, um, providing a vehicle and opportunity for that. Twenty and twenty-five opportunities. The first thing that should be mentioned here is again, our, our, our partnership, the ability to work together really with, uh, the kiddos at the middle school. Um, increased community programming for seniors as well as every age group. We did host a pickleball tournament this last November that was super successful. We provided, we created four courts on the two tennis courts on a day and, and had around sixty participants that played in that tournament. So it was a success. I think you will find a lot of pickleballers once you build the courts that you're already destined and planning on providing. Um, and then the last thing, you talk about expansion of number of community services and members served. If you go to, thank you, go to the next slide. Uh, I think again, when you look at the Y, we want you to see the Y as the Center for Community Involvement. That's what we are. That's who we are. Um, we are, we're not just a gym. We're not just a workout facility. We never have been in the hundred and forty-three years that we've been serving L.A. Metro in general or, or serving throughout the county. Um, and we won't continue to be, or we will continue to be that group that serves folks going forward and not simply a gym or place. So the last thing that we've talked about, Center for Community Well-being on the last slide, we'll show you a couple of photos there. The photo on the left, if we were, we all remember what happened on January seventh. We all remember when the bell was rung and the chance to, or the need to, to evacuate and to get out of Dodge and be out of the space. We made a phone call to, to, uh, Dr. Jose Gomez, who's the president of Pasadena City College and happens to serve as a Metro L.A. Board Member, happens to serve as a Metro LA Board Member, and said, could we have the parking lot, Lot Three at PCC? And he said, sure, what else do you need? And we said, do you have any pop-up tents and do you have any tables? And on the ninth, that phone call was made at ten AM, and by two o'clock, we had popped up thinking we might just provide water and some other items. Over the course of the ninth through the twelfth, we served over ten thousand people at PCC, providing bottled water, food, clothing, what was just eight pop-up tents and fifty tables or so, you can see from that photo and that image. It was truly unbelievable to see the outpouring of our community. Meanwhile, so you might say, well, if that's going on at PCC, what's happening here in Sierra Madre? And in Sierra Madre, Sheena and our team here locally, because I was at PCC almost nonstop over those three and a half days, at, at Sierra Madre, we have served another fifteen thousand people since we began on the tenth, once the green light was to be able to get back into the facility. So, I think the last clip we have is a video that shows you the difference between day one and day two. So, that was January tenth, not a whole lot in the Sierra Madre room, and here's the eleventh. Thanks, James. Thank you all very much, and again, without all the partners throughout the community, and I know there's just a small touch of them from the folks at World Central Kitchen to the Laundry Truck Los Angeles, which continues to serve on Tuesdays. If you need a load of laundry thrown in and you haven't been able to do that, bring it by, they'll be happy to help you, as well as those people that are from our services. It's been an amazing, it has been an amazing experience. It continues in some different forms. The Y continues to provide services from free memberships to families that have been impacted by the fires, to continuing to provide services on Tuesdays and Thursdays for those folks that are still in need of basic things. We will continue to morph into new spaces and new ways of helping folks. We continue to be a large part of the long-term recovery group that's been formed in the Pasadena, Altadena, and Sierra Madre communities, as well as the Pasadena Community Youth and Family Services Group. So, please know, we're engaged, we're at the table, and we're, we're involved in this as it continues to go forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I'd like to come up now and give you guys a proclamation and thanks for all of your support.
If we can get the rest of your team. Yeah, absolutely.
All right, so, what we have here, it says, whereas the city of Sierra Madre faced unprecedented challenges due to the recent wildfire, wildfires and subsequent floods that struck our community, leaving widespread damage, displacement, and hardship in their wake. And whereas, in the face of this crisis, the YMCA stood as a steadfast partner, opening its doors to those in need and providing immediate shelter, comfort, and critical supplies to families who lost their homes and belongings. And whereas, the YMCA, through the generosity of donations and the dedication of its staff and volunteers, extended unwavering support to those affected by offering resources. And whereas, the YMCA played a crucial role in community recovery, offering not only physical aid, but emotional logistical support to displaced residents, helping rebuild hope and stability during an extraordinary difficult time. And whereas, the continued partnership and compassion demonstrated by the YMCA have exemplified the values of service, solidarity, and community resilience. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Sierra Madre extends its deepest gratitude to the YMCA for its leadership, generosity, and extraordinary service during and after the wildfires and floods. Your commitment to our residents, especially the most vulnerable, made a vital difference when it mattered most. Presented this twenty-second day of April, 2025, by the Sierra Madre City Council, Mayor Robert Parkhurst, Mayor Pro Tem Christine Lowe, council members Edward Garcia, Jean Goss, and Kelly Crebs. Thank you guys so much. And the pictures they had don't do this justice, there was so much going on there. You said the laundry truck, there was also an eyeglass truck, I mean, all kinds of services were there. This was such a big event. I, I'd like to ask all the council to come up and be part of this picture. I think it's had such a huge impact on our community that I want that to be part of the record.
All right. There we go.
All right. analysts, James Carlson.
Good evening, Mayor Parkhurst and City Council. I, I just want to take a moment to provide a little bit more detail on something that came up in public comment, because I think it's important. The soil testing, the lead testing is going to be done not just at ballparks, but throughout the parks, so Sierra Vista Park and Memorial Park, and the results are actually expected tomorrow. And this is all being done by Russ Meek and the Sierra Madre Girls Softball Association.
And they did that on their own, right? There's no directives to do this?
That's correct. They just, they just took charge and did it on their own, but they're really covering the whole Sierra Madre Park area, so it's great. I'm afraid Director Yanez is unavailable for the update this morning. However, and fortunately for me, who's filling in, we have the construction team here, and they will be writing a presentation and are available to answer your questions. If there are any questions that remain unanswered at the end of the update, I'll make sure you get a response as soon as possible. I'd like to introduce the team. We have Sandra Berger and Brian Jarvis from Vertex Project Management, Jonathan Reichert from TSK Architects, Albert Jacquey Omazi, and he's from AMG Contractors. And now we'll go ahead and start. Jonathan will provide a quick PowerPoint, so give me just a moment to put it on the screen.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and council members. Super excited to be able to show you just some updated imagery of where the library is at. You know, a picture is worth a thousand words, and so just want to be able to show what's going on in the library, so you can see a lot of the exciting things that are occurring. So, to start with, I want to direct your eyes to that image in the top left there, if you don't mind zooming in, James. So, this was the library as you've known it for the past seventy years, and so this is kind of coming in right off the entry, right towards that main circulation desk. There was that low lid right off the entries you're coming in. If you go down to the image below that, that shows where we're at in construction right now. And so you can see, we've actually pulled away that lid and opened up the library quite a bit. If you look in the background, it's kind of hard to see in this image, but you can see that the soffits, that's holding a lot of our mechanical equipment, has been, started to be framed in, and indeed, we have one of our mechanical equipment that's servicing this main library book stack space in as well. And then if you go to the right, that'll show you where we're going. And so it kind of gives a little bit of an idea of, you know, where we came from, where we are in construction, and where we're going. And so as you can see, a little bit in contrast to that original image where we had that low ceiling, which kind of made the space a little bit smaller, as we go into the new design, it's opened up quite a bit, and you can see, that's the soffit in the back that you saw framed a little bit earlier, and then the opening moving towards our new addition, going, yeah, into that new addition on the south side. If we go on to the next slide, we have a similar setup where we can see where things came from and where we are and where we're going. So, right here, this is on the south side of the library, right on the left side of this wall right here, that was the existing children's space, and you can see right now in construction, we're at a slightly different angle here, but what you can see is a little bit of an opening. And that opening actually... Next slide there, James. Yeah, sorry about that. This opening right here, that's actually the opening into our new teen room. So whereas the original library didn't have any space dedicated to the teams, the new library will. Sorry, one slide previous to this one. Sorry, I asked him something to do really hard, which was zoom in and out for you guys. I was, I was trying to be kind of ambitious here. But you can see that we have that new entry into the, the teen room, that you can see the beginning of the framing of the soffit right above it. And, no, you're on the right one, thank you, sir. And you can even see the mechanical equipment begin to going in there. That's going to bring AC into the library, which is an amazing thing in itself. Back in that teen space, you can also see a soffit where we're going to be running some of our mechanical equipment as well. You know, one of the challenges that we faced in the library was the flooring and really making that a nice, smooth flooring, in order to put in all of our new carpet. So you can see that here, that we have that new flooring down, really ready to see some of our final finishes. And if you go to that image on the right, again, that'll show you where we're going in this library, really how we're connecting from the existing into our addition right here, and we have that brand-new teen space, and then a little peek-a-boo window so that we can also see into the kid's space along with our print center there. If we go to the next slide, we'll be standing on the south side of the library, looking north. So here's the existing, where you see again that low lid that is over the main circulation desk. You see how that's been opened up quite a bit, creating much better views across the library here, making it a really open, inviting space. And then with our rendering on the right, it kind of shows you where we're going and see how we're moving in the right direction towards getting to that final design that we're really looking for, for this library space. And then going on to the next slide, we don't have any renderings here, but just want to show you again some of the, some of the progress that's being made. This picture on the lower right-hand corner, that's our new break room. These big metal bars going across, that's strapping to hold up casework, because our staff is finally getting a break room for the first time, and they're going to have a little bit of a kitchenette that goes with that, so that they can have a moment to rest and recuperate as they seek to serve the, the community. This is the restroom right in here, so one of our now accessible, compliant restrooms. You can see the framing going, and then this hallway is actually going towards the women's restroom at the end of the hallway there. Then going on to the next, the next slide, I want to show you some of the things going on in the exterior of the building. So if you remember, last time I was here, I mentioned that we're getting ready to pour our slab for the addition. Well, what you can see here in these pictures is you can see that these are formwork walls for us to be able to pour our concrete up against. This yellow stuff on the ground, that's our underslab vapor barrier. It's basically to, to keep water from coming up into our slab, coming up into our space. You can see all the rebar that's going in to make this a structurally sound and fit addition, really bringing it up to modern code. And something to be excited about, this box right here, that's actually the formwork for us to pour the foundation and the walls for our new elevator shaft.
There you go.
So having that elevator that's going to be bringing people up from the south side of the project here, up onto that floor coming off of Sierra Madre Boulevard. And then finally, down in the left-hand corner, you know, something that we wanted to show you was that we have our steel on site, so we're not worrying about tariffs and how that might affect the project, because we already have that in hand, and as soon as we get that slab poured, that steel's going to start getting erected, and we're going to be able to see from the street that addition coming into place. And with that, I wanted to...
Good evening, everyone, Mr. Mayor, council. Brian Jarvis, Senior Managing Director for the Vertex Companies, in charge of our project management services. With me tonight is Sandra Berger, she's our managing director out of Costa Mesa and the lead for the library project. So I think you saw some great pictures and got a little bit of momentum going on the project, which is a good thing. We also wanted to report that we are currently tracking to be on schedule to meet all of the grant deadline requirements in the, in the opening next spring, which is great, the budget's in great shape, contingencies are strong. I know there's been some questions in preview of council meetings, so we're here with the team and Albert from AMG to answer whatever questions that you, that you might have.
Thank you so much. Council questions?
Oh, just following up on our last council meeting, because we were concerned about the fact that we were behind by some, something like thirty to forty days, and we just wanted more specifics on that, because we were told that, once we got the framing done, that you guys were going to be able to double and triple up your trades and pick up a lot of time. So, has that taken place? Are you, are you actually making more progress now towards the deadline?
Yeah, I can't, I can't report on the, what was previously commented on at the council meeting, but the schedule is based on us getting to substantial completion by the beginning of next year.
Right.
Anyways, what we talked about. We're still on schedule for that. The team is actively working for ways to potentially bring the schedule back in. I mean, I think doubling up the trades and stacking trades is really not something that we could do at this point. I think it's something that we might consider, but given the size of the project, it might not be totally feasible. That being said, the schedule does have some days at the end of the project where, depending on how things go over the next few months, it's possible to reel that back in, but our goal right now is really maintaining that schedule that has been reported to, to complete the project in January.
Yeah, I just, there was, there was a lot of concern. Going back to when we first hired your company, we, to my understanding, there's been quite a bit of turnover in the position, not, obviously not your fault, or, you know, unforeseen...
Yeah, unfortunate circumstances with a, a couple of staff members.
Exactly, and you know, we were told early on, because we, we were going, we had a shorter deadline before, if you can imagine that, I'm sure you heard, we were very concerned, and we were, we were told and promised that, we were talking about contingencies, rainy weather, old building, and open-up walls, you're going to find stuff we haven't handled. Weather, well, we're going to get that, I think the, the term was the envelope built, and once that's built, weather doesn't matter.
Yep.
And now we're, I don't think the envelope's even yet built, and we're kind of now almost past the rainy season. So I just want, for my, the council, for staff, and more importantly, our residents, just some reassurance that we're on time, everything's going to happen before the grant deadlines, and we will have this nice, beautiful, new library for all of us to enjoy and not a lot of expense out of, out of the coffers that we don't have by not meeting the deadline.
Absolutely, totally, totally understand, and I think the team has been working well to maintain that, and we just had a call today with Layla quickly to confirm all of those deadlines, and right now, we're, we're tracking towards, you know, having that building complete, January timeframe, being able to fit everything out ahead of the, the grant deadlines and ready for the grand reopening, which would be fantastic, and obviously what we've seen tonight, a lot of community spirit, so I can only imagine what, what that is going to be like when that happens, because I know the library is a major part of the communities, and we take that seriously.
Do you, do you have some kind of like scheduling tracker or something like that that kind of keeps you on? Obviously, it seems like you do, because you know how many days you're behind, or... The second question after that is, we were told by Arnufo that we're going to be kind of chipping away a few days per week or per every two weeks, is that still happening?
I think we're looking for ways to be able to do that. I mean, obviously, the trades are sequenced in a certain manner, because given the, the size of this project, I mean, it's somewhat difficult to get people ahead of each other. I think as opportunities present themselves, I think AMG's looking for every way to potentially do that. But again, given the scope that is in a small space and kind of the timeline that we do have, it's not necessarily feasible at all points to stack trades like that.
And I appreciate the candor.
No, and what we are looking to do is, we do have, you know, some buffer built into the schedule related to weather that we've been using to some extent. We have some buffer built at the end of the project, really to close out and punch lists. Again, the, the renovation part of the library is, is going to be significantly ahead of the addition parts, there's a chance where, you know, that's being punched out and basically ready for furniture, maybe before the addition is. So, until we get totally out of the woods with some of those things, I think, I think we're looking for every way to shave off some time. But right now, we're planning for a January completion.
Mayor, if I may, and maybe Brian, you can expand, and I want to lay to rest any concerns that the... Mayor, if I may, and maybe Brian, you can expand, and I wanna lay to rest any concerns that the council has. And when we're talking about stacking trades, that is an option that we can consider. If we start to look at the timeline and the timeline starts to get short and we feel like we're not gonna meet the deadlines. But right now, it looks like we're gonna meet the deadlines, and in stacking trades and deviating from the current plan, comes at a cost. So right now is not the time to, to consider those things and expand cost when we know that we still have plenty of time to complete the project, and maybe you can expand on that.
Yeah, I mean, the way, the way that the contract is, is set up is that for to expedite and work overtime, if you will, I mean, that comes at obviously increased cost to the trades that are involved. And we're trying to weigh the options of if there's a possibility to do that, that's something that we could look into as the project progresses. But if we play out the project towards, you know, towards the current deadline, if it doesn't make sense financially to do that, then that's something that we don't wanna do and use up contingency, which could be used for additional changes or put back into the library as the project progresses.
And I wanna be totally transparent here, and this is going a long way, having you here, Mr. Jarvis and Ms. Berger. When we hired your firm, you were gonna be the owner representative.
Correct.
And we did not see a representative come to council really at all. And so there was a lot of frustration and confusion, so I'm happy you're here. I'm not asking you to be here every week.
That's great.
But, you know, showing your face goes a long way, giving us an update. We were getting great updates from AMG, but, but you're, you're standing in as our, as though you're us. So having, having updates from, from you is, is very important to us, because you're, you're basically our eyes and ears and lighting the fire to get things going on behalf of, of the city. So it's going a long way to having you here today.
Right.
And I, and I'm thrilled. No, no ill feelings, but I just wanna make sure that you have an understand that we were, there were some frustrations and some current concerns going on, just, just being totally transparent.
No, and we understand that, we, we acknowledge that, and then this is something that, you know, we love to do. So again, however we can, whatever we can do to reaffirm our commitment to this project and to the, into the city is what we wanna do. And as Ms. Berger's mentioned multiple times to the team, is that we are available to provide, you know, updates as needed. I think we are doing the ad hoc committee as well, which I know is another way to reach community. So yeah, we're willing to do what it is that it takes to, to make this a success.
Can I add to that?
Please.
Pictures were great, keep them coming.
Excellent.
Love that. Now, your pictures are worth a thousand words. Love it.
And I'll just say that those obviously don't show everything.
Sure.
Because there's other spaces that, you know, I, I didn't wanna overwhelm you with lots of steel studs and, and stuff being framed up. And, you know, I can get into the details of pipes sticking through, you know, the walls, but it is exciting to see. And I, I know that something that we're looking at for the ad hoc committee is that as the steel starts to get erected, to take the ad hoc committee onsite so that they can see it as well in person. So we'll, we'll make sure that we keep sending pictures along.
Thank you.
Councilmember Krebs?
Far be it from me for the government to direct our media, but I think it would be great if you were to connect with our local newspaper. And I suspect our community would love to see some of those pictures in our paper. And I know the editor's always looking for content, so, you know, I think it would be, I think some of those pictures of the progress would be, would go a long way to helping our community understand kind of where we're at and allay some of the concerns that Councilmember Garcia mentioned.
Yeah, if I can get their contact, I'd be happy to work with them.
Right, sure.
Excellent.
And I'll just close it out here. You know, and I think you know this, we, we are one of the oldest libraries in the state. We were one of the first libraries that were established. This community tried five or six times to try to get the funding on it. This has been a tremendous gift, it's really important to the community. You're hearing the concern from council, we're really glad you're here. I'll just wanna leave you with, just, you know, keep pushing on this. This has been, you know, th- this is a really big deal for this community, and we wanna make sure that what we've gotten, the work that you're doing, really comes to fruition. And we get this, this incredible new building that will last, you know, multiple generations. So thank you for being here for tonight, thank you for your efforts, and, and please keep it up and, and, you know, keep us updated on, on the progress and the ad hoc committee updated on your progress.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. We will now move on to consent items. City Clerk Aguilar, could you read the consent items by title only?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Well, that's not, that is not the city clerk.
Mr. Mayor, before you and the city council, there are four items for consideration. The first of the four is consent item A, consideration of resolution twenty-five dash twenty-four approving certain demands. It is the city staff's recommendation that the city council approve resolution twenty-five dash twenty-four. The second item on the consent calendar is a consideration of a YMCA lease renewal agreement. City staff recommends that the city council approve the lease renewal agreement between the city of Sierra Madre and the YMCA. Consent item C was moved to discussion by unanimous council vote, and so we move on to consent item D, which is a consideration of resolutions twenty-five dash twenty-six and also twenty-five dash twenty-seven, proclaiming the continuation of local emergencies caused by Eaton Fire and also caused by the twenty-twenty-five mid-February winter storms. It is staff's recommendation that the city council adopt both resolutions proclaiming the continuation of local emergencies. And finally, consent item E is a consideration of updated public health services contract with the county of Los Angeles. It is recommended that the city council also approve the public health services contract with the county of Los Angeles. And Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. All right, any questions on consent item A? B?
I believe it's, are we re, are these terms changed since we published this, this contract? I believe things have changed, so we need to.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. The YMCA did contact staff and request that the term of the agreement be changed from five years to two years. That change came after the agenda was published, so that, that change would need to be included in the, in the, that change would need to be in this contract before council approves it.
Should it also have the repair of, say, the, the pool motor responsibility and all that being?
That's in the contract.
It's in the contract.
Oh, I'm sorry, I must have missed it.
Up to twenty, twenty-five thousand, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, on, on that note, it might be helpful, Mr. City Manager, if you could, just maybe hitting the highlights for transparency, because we didn't get in our agenda packet or maybe what was published to the community, the, the changes in this contract. Not all of them, but the sort of in the key, in the key terms, and it might be useful, I think, to maybe highlight the, the few key economic changes in the terms.
Absolutely, and, and so there's a, there's a number of changes. Number one is the YMCA is going to be responsible for replacing the, the pool pump and equipment up to twenty-five thousand dollars. The, the, the lease will be reduced from, I believe it's seventy-five hundred dollars to thirty-five hundred dollars. The other item is the, any capital improvement projects is gonna go from, the, the responsibility was anything over seven thousand dollars was the YMCA. That's, that's gonna be reduced to five thousand dollars. So anything five thousand dollars or less is a YMCA, five thousand dollars or more is the responsibility of the city. Obviously, the, the elevator is still gonna be the city's responsibility. We'll be looking to see if we can provide funding to do that as a capital improvement project in the next, in the next fiscal year. And I think those are the major changes in the contract.
Thank you.
Any other comments on consent item B?
Questions, you mean?
Excuse me, questions, please.
No, no questions.
Oh, okay.
I have a comment, but no question.
All right, consent item D. Consent item E. All right. Then I will go ahead and op.
Got it.
Then I'll go ahead and open this up for public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any comment cards for the consent agenda?
None at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Great, we'll close public comment, bring it back for council discussion. Are there, is there any discussion on the four items on, on the consent agenda?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, on, on item B, I, I just wanna, as you gave the proclamation, I shook Kirk Knopf's hand, and I just wanna share what I said to him, so for, for full transparency, it wasn't mic'd, right? I, I said to him, the first time he came to us, I think this is his third time presenting to us. We were kind of in a bad space with, with the pool, a lot of dissent in the community. We, we, it was coming off of COVID, we wanted a lot of community involvement with, with that building and that, that Y. Within one year, he came back and he made good on all those promises. And another year later, he still is, he still is making good and the Y is still making good on those promises and even expanding some things. So as far as community swim and, you know, getting the Hawks Regatta back up and obviously disaster relief. Really showed, we made the right, the previous council to me made the right decision in bringing the Y in as a community partner, rather than someone just that's a tenant. And as far as the, you know, the negotiation on the contract, yes, lease comes down, but some of our, our, you know, responsibilities are, are changing, so I'm okay with it. I know this is just a consent item, but I just wanted to, to say that the Y's, Y's been a great tenant and not just a tenant, but, but a community partner.
Mayor, if I may add, one other really, really important item that I left out was the partnership between the YMCA, the city of Sierra Madre, and PUSD to bring youth sports programs to the middle school. Where we'll have an after-school basketball program and a volleyball program that is also part of this contract.
And I'll echo Councilmember Garcia, I can remember when the, the first renewal or one of the renewals came up and we had lots of community feedback coming before us on it. You know, it, it's something to say, we're, we're not hearing that from the community. Anything, everything that we are hearing is very positive. I think that, you know, the idea of, of partnership, the concept of partnership, you guys have just been fantastic on a day-to-day and then went above and beyond during the disaster. So thank you so much, and yeah, I think it, it's gonna be the extreme pleasure of this council to approve this contract.
Can I add one more thing really quick?
Please.
So, um, growing up in this town, we used to go to the YMCA down on New York, and that was where our basketball leagues were and all of our sports and things. And then when that closed, we moved over to Monrovia, and I just can't say how happy I am that it's in our town. And growing up in this town also, my brother and his wife met at the pool, James worked at the pool. It was such a great community place, and I never thought it could be replaced the way it has been, and it's truly part of our city. So even though it's contracted out, you truly are part of our city and we feel like you're part of our staff. So thank you for making that community connection and collaboration and making a part of us again.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Um, I echo everything everyone said, but I also wanna give a shout-out to one of our own for really championing the project with the after-school programs at the middle school. Our own, Councilmember Goss has been, I think he leaned over and told me he's been talking about doing this since, since twenty-seventeen. And he has been.
That's true.
Dogged and committed and really just pushing for this to happen. So I really wanna give him a shout-out for really keeping on this and really getting to this point, it's really exciting.
It is, thank you. Can I just comment on that?
Please.
What a wonderful night, just to hear that we actually have this, it's in the contract, it's gonna happen, it's gonna make a big difference in the kids' lives in our community. And we'll have kids coming from outside of the community using that gym as well. So this is a game changer, so I'm really, really thankful for this, for everyone involved.
Would you be the, the person to give us the motion for the?
I would be, I'd be absolutely honored to give the motion, to pass the entire consent.
Consent?
Yes. I move that we pass the consent calendar.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, so now we will move on to what is now our first discussion item, which was consent item C, which is the letters of support for the restoration of funding and staffing for the Institute of Museum and Library Services. We have librarian Regan here, so it is all yours.
Hello, Mayor Parkhurst, Mayor Protem Low, and our honorable city council. I'm Leila Regan, your friendly neighborhood city librarian, and it was my turn to wear the pink jacket. You told us. So I am here tonight to talk, it's been such a wonderful night, and so I apologize to bring in a little bit of a downer. But if you don't know, the Institute for, the Institute of Museum and Library Services has recently been under an executive order on March fourteenth. The executive order was in reference to eliminating the Institute of Museum and Library Services, also known as IMLS. To the maximum extent consistent with applicable law, that's from the order. The order states that the institute must be reduced to its statutory, statutory functions. It also requires that non-statutory components and functions shall be eliminated, so that is from the March fourteenth order. Shortly after that, the staffing was put on administrative leave and funds were frozen. On April third, we were notified from the state that effective April first, all of the state funding from IMLS was terminated to the state of California, Connecticut, and Washington. We are, as far as I know, we are the only three states that have received termination notices for our grants. We received our federal funding mostly through the California State Library under the Library Services and Technology Act. And that, as, as far as we know, has been terminated. And so in the current fiscal year of twenty-four, twenty-five, the state library received fif, a little over fifteen million in funding to assist local California libraries to provide programs and services, as well as supporting the services provided by the state library to state government, policymakers, and the public. At the date of the termination, over twenty-one percent of that funding was not sent to the state of California. So what exactly does that mean? The, the state library did notify, notify us of certain items that are gonna be canceled, most notably our, our high-speed broadband services. I have pulled up what, what the cost was, for example, for moving our, our Wi-Fi and our internet from four-four-zero to three-fifty. It was a little over a hundred thousand that we didn't have to pay for. So that is something to consider too, as we look at our transition back to four-four-zero. In addition to that, the LSTA has a lot of wonderful grants, but it also provided a lot of training for staff, a lot of free training through the California State Library. So I'm not gonna read you the list, but this is just some items that we'll be losing if the grants are, if the funds are terminated fully. So what about us? These, this is just a smattering of some of our grants that we've received over the years from, from LSTA and from federal funding. The loss of funding prevents being able to provide future programs or special projects. A lot of these were special projects, they were bridges in funding. Current LSTA grant opportunities that have been terminated include community impact grants, which help California's library respond effectively to local needs and also play for all grants to help California libraries design and create welcoming family play spaces. Both those grants, I feel, were critical ones that we could have used, especially while transitioning back to a renovated building. With these grants no longer available, we are looking at a possible funding gap for, for any programs that we would like to start up. For example, in the renovated building, we planned a maker space. And in the, in this current fiscal year, Monrovia Public Library did receive one of these LSTA grants specifically to make a maker space. The grants can also be used not just for programming and for items, but in the previous fiscal year, twenty-three, twenty-four, Glendale Library was able to use it to create essentially an internship program with staffing, with people who recently graduated with their, with their MLIS. So it had a lot of wonderful opportunities that really made a difference. I know that it looks like we haven't used it since twenty-twenty-one, and that's because we were focused on other things. But as you can see, even as far back as two thousand and one, we received one-point-three million from, in, in two thousand and one, that was actually a lot of money, okay? I just wanna point that out. But that's what actually helped us originally build our web, our city website, as well as our online catalog. It provided staffing and computers. So these grants have been very integral for a very long time. So I'll try to keep it short. So what can we, what can we do, how can we restore this funding? This QR code will take you to the American Library Association's page. They launched a campaign called Show Up For Our Libraries. So if you scan the QR code, it basically tells you the same thing, but it will take you to the page that shows realistic steps, anyone can. anyone can take to make a stand and ask IMLS funding and staffing be restored. So libraries can continue to do what they do best, which is support, provide and show up for our communities. So with that, we had, I also have our library board of trustee Chair Diane Sands here. Not just because she's a trustee, but because IMLS also funds our museums. And so our Historic Preservation Society is also receiving notifications and concerns about their funding being terminated. So I know she has something she would like to say, so I will let her come up. Since this is pretty much the end of mine, I will say that our trustees did have a special meeting to approve a letter for themselves, which is why I created a letter of support for our city council. Our trustees are moving forward with theirs, so I'm going to let, I'm going to hand off to our trustee now to tell you a little bit about the museum side of the IMLS funding termination.
Thank you so much.
She's taller than I am. Way taller than I am. The, the library and the museums are really intertwined with each other. And I'll explain some of that why. But on April first, I received an email from the AASLH. Now that's the American Association for State and Local History. And that's the organization that awarded the Historical Society a, uh, award of merit for the centennial book that we published. We submitted it that year. We got a nice award. Many of us went to Oklahoma City for a big presentation. And as both an officer and docent for the Historical Society and a library trustee, I had joined AASLH to keep up to date on ideas, on training methods, on education and other areas of history and historical archives especially. The email alert I received was, and it wasn't an April Fool's joke. At first it seemed to be on April first, was to inform all of us that as of the end of March, the current federal administration had put the entire staff of the Institute of Museum and Library Services, as Leila refers to the IMLS, you'll hear a whole lot of alphabet letters, on leave. With eight hundred and ninety-one awards to libraries and museums still open and pending, and now subject to cancellation, the IMLS reached out to the Alliance of Museums, the AAM, about legal options to challenge this action. I reached out to our library staff, who informed me that a majority of our regular grant funding comes from a state funding agency, the LAS, LSTA and the IMLS. As Leila referenced, in two thousand and two alone, our library received then a huge amount of one point three eight million dollars to implement digitation, cataloging, technology upgrades and so on, all to bring us into the twenty-first century. The trustees in a special meeting, as Leila mentioned, unanimously approved that we send a statement to our representatives to impress upon them the value of these grant monies and the benefits they provide to members of our community. Without funding, we lose our paid internet. Leila mentioned that. We lose programs encouraging children to start reading when very young. We lose paid staff hours to provide access to the history of our town and our inhabitants. We lose teaching children to read out loud so they can develop good reading skills. The list goes on and on and on. Veterans outreach, anything you can think of. And lack of funds from IMLS can affect future grants for our new libraries FF and E, which would be disastrous for us. This affects both the library and the Historical Society. The library needs funding to continue many of these value-added programs they provide. Leila has mentioned many of them, and to maintain our historical archives, which the library keeps and takes care of. Our libraries are part of the cultural fabric of this country. They educate and inspire, and more importantly, they are the keepers of our shared history to ensure that we learn from it and we never forget it. All these agencies and institutions with an alphabet soup of names serve an important role. Without them, libraries and museums across every state may be forced to cut staff, reduce educational programming, cancel new exhibits and in some cases, close their doors. If libraries, museums, education and history are important to you, I encourage you to improve, to approve this letter before you and help the trustees make their feelings known to our elected officials. The future of our libraries and any entities related to the libraries may depend upon it. I thank you.
Thank you so much. This is a discussion item. Do we need to open it up for public comment? Mr. City Attorney, I hate to weigh on you. I think we do have to open some for public comment. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, yes, you do, because it's a discussion item.
Excellent, okay. Librarian Regan, did, are you done with your presentation? Okay. Do we have any comment cards for this?
There was one public comment, comment card submitted from Diane Sands. She was ahead of you.
Good, okay. All right, so I guess we should have done questions first.
We can do questions and comments together.
Yeah, so.
There's no comment anyway.
Yes, there's no comment. So I apologize for going out of order here. Questions from council?
Yeah, I just want to understand, the IMLS is federal and I understand that. And the LSTA was a federal act, but I think the federal, the organization is state. Is, is that correct? Okay.
Yes, so the, um, basically IMLS gives a, a lot of amount of funds every year to each state to distribute, usually by population base and economic base metric. So that determines how specific libraries might get more, that might need it more. Other libraries might get less, but then they also have the added grants and other programs like, for example, our Wall Street Journal, I believe, is through. So even, even the little things really do add up.
So I'm, I'm wondering if it makes sense and, you know, we, we could probably talk about it tonight. But should we be lobbying our, our state representatives as well because there is a state component? And maybe for the IIST?
LSTA.
LSTA component of it? I don't know if that makes sense.
So the, the state of California is actually currently in a lawsuit regarding the termination of funds.
Saw that in your staff report. Great staff report, by the way.
Thank you. So the American Library Association is also in a lawsuit. So we have the American Library Association that has filed a lawsuit and the state of California, along with, I believe, twenty-plus other states have joined the lawsuit against the termination of IMLS funding.
And if I heard you correct in the, the staff report, only four, the federal government said, or only four states are not getting grant, their grants anymore?
Correct. Well, only three.
Three, that's right.
Yes, California, Connecticut and Washington State are the only three that were named with termination of funding.
Was there any discussion on how that was chosen or?
There is no official discussion. The only conclusion was that all three mentioned diversity and equity in their grant applications. But that's not anything that was explicitly stated by the federal government.
I think that's all I have questions.
So follow up on that. Was there any reason stated for canceling the, these funds?
No.
So there was no waste, fraud or abuse that was associated with this? There was no other rationale that was given as a part of this?
No, the only notification that the California State Library received was just that effective April first funds from, for LSTA has been terminated.
So it was just like a short email or was it even a letter on?
I believe it was an email.
An email just saying that, that, that the funding has been terminated.
Yep.
And just to the three states?
Correct.
And these are on current grants that were approved or grant programs are already?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
So they terminated, that's why currently there are, twenty-one percent of the grants are, funding is not fulfilled. Most of them were fulfilled prior to the termination, but because we're not at the end of a fiscal year, there are some that we didn't receive, the state didn't receive twenty-one percent of the total grants promised.
So that, that's for this current fiscal year? Okay.
Mr. Mayor. Um, just procedurally, so my understanding is that the library board of trustees has their letter and they've approved dissemination of it to whomever the intended recipients are. And then separate and apart, this consideration tonight is for the city council to separately send similarly, you know, similarly stated appeals for, you know, restoration of the funding.
Correct. We wanted to ensure that our trustees knew what was happening and the steps that we wanted to take and make sure that we incorporated that. And then we wanted to then take it to the next level, which would be encouraging our city council to also support the decision that our trustees have made. So we are currently approving some city council backing for these letters. Which is kind of the only thing that I think we can do right now as far as.
I have some questions on what's now going to be, not need to be, but would come up to funding lack so that therefore we would have to decide, you would have to decide what exactly you're funding or not. So would the veterans database then be taken away, which the cemetery uses to mark our graves and validate?
So that I'm, I'm not sure of. That would actually be a good question for the Pioneer Cemetery to see if they lost any funding.
They use your library.
Oh, they use our library.
They use your library to do all that search.
If, if, if it's ancestry dot com related, then that is privately funded through the Friends of the Library.
What about the J Store?
J Store is also funded through the city. The ones that we would lose would be, right now we have Brain Fuse. We have, I believe we have College Now, Help Now and Vet Now. And so we would lose, that was through our Southern California Library Cooperative, which was through LSTA. Lots of different funneling down, trickle effect. So right now, the U resources that we would lose would be our, our Brain Fuse, Vet Now, Help Now, College Now, which those three help veteran, are veterans. They also provide online tutoring and homework help and then college prep. I know we'll be losing that. We'll be losing our access to the Wall Street Journal. And then the overall, as far as the, inner, our free public wifi goes, we would lose a savings of anywhere from eight to ten grand per year. And that's how much is pretty much covered by the LSTA. The other thing to consider with that is not only the move back to four-four-zero, which was costly, that was mostly cut, I think we only paid a thousand dollars. But we were looking to upgrade along with IT to ten, to ten gigs. I don't know the terms, to, to ten Gs. And we were getting a pretty great discount for that with our current LSTA funding through the state. So we're unsure if that funding is still going to be available or what that looks like. I don't have too many price points. I did look up the cost for moving our circuit here or getting a new circuit. Other than that, I don't know if our, I don't think our IT manager's still here, but he might have better insight on what the full embedded cost would be.
So then if that was not funded through this and not given discounts, then therefore our general fund and your budget would then have to pick what is paid for and what's not and what our, what our citizens and residents are going to lack?
Correct.
Okay.
And so these letters go to our representative and our two senators. And, and this is, so they're, they're cutting this out of the current budget year. So this has already been allocated by, by, by Congress and, and this is what, what, that is supposed to be spent? That, that's my understanding, right?
Yes. It, April first, they cut, that, so the twenty-one percent that we are still supposed, that the state was still supposed to receive in federal funding, this, the federal is now keeping.
And so that, this, this fiscal year goes then through September thirtieth, so then the next budget year, there's going to be, the same amount of funding would be part of that, I mean, that, that, those lineups would be part of the next budget that come out as well, right?
Yes, depending on if we get more confirmation, if the funding doesn't get restored, then we'd have to look at our next fiscal budget and see what, what we can afford to keep.
Right.
Essentially.
So, so, so our fiscal budget, we start in July one, federal government starts on October one. So is there a scenario where, you know, it's afloat for a couple of months? Or does, is the process take a lot longer to get the grants to, to apply in, to get them approved, to get them funded, to get like all, you know, all of the, 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 the process to get the funding to us? Or is it, is it literally like, you know, it, it, we just have to figure out till, you know, will we figure out between now and October one? Or is it, it's now and it could be much longer?
Right now, they, they're no longer accepting any applications for grants. So unless you already have secured funding, they're not going to, there's, there's no buffer essentially. So if they, if the state has the funding, they'll distribute it appropriately. But with twenty-one percent unfunded, what is going to happen in our next fiscal year is we will not be receiving any, at this time, we won't be receiving any LSTA federal funding. And, and I do want to mention that Governor Newsom did cut the library funding as well in general, in the state's overall budget. It's not been finalized. We have till May, until that budget becomes finalized. But there is a pretty significant cut to library services also in the state budget. So we're looking at a very significant loss of federal and state funding for the next.
And when you apply for funds, is it to, to the IMLS or the LSTA or is it to like grants.gov?
Normally it's through the California State Library.
Okay.
And, but you can, we have gotten grants directly from IMLS as well.
Okay.
So it can go either way. But normally it's through the California State Library and I will say that their grant process is usually pretty quick. So we can go from applying to having the funds usually within three months or so.
So as a part of the may revise, we may have to, to yet another concern because it's not in the state budget as well?
Correct.
Okay. Sorry, there was a lot of questions. Other questions from anybody? All right. Did you come to?
Yeah, the Historical Society is also drafting a similar letter, which will be coming to council to put on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay.
So a very similar thing because what happens to the library happens to us. We only have an archivist, even a part-time one, because originally the position was established by a grant. And it's just without funding, we could easily lose that, so.
And, and would you, would, would the Historical Society be sending a letter as well and then you'd be asking us to send a similar letter?
Exactly.
To, to, okay.
Yes.
Great.
So we should be getting that to you to put in the agenda for meeting two weeks from now.
Okay.
Because they met today.
Okay.
The timing was off.
Yeah, the timing was off.
Understood.
Mayor, in, in the packet, we had three letters and it was for our federal representatives in Congress and Senate. If council would like, we can amend it to mirror what the trustees have sent out and we can have those letters prepared for your signature as well. I believe that the trustees had, they were going to send them out to state representatives as well.
Okay. All right. Then let's make that as part of the discussion. Cause so, so what, if I'm hearing you correctly, we've got the, the fed letters in the packet and, and one of the options that you're just presenting to us is that we can, can echo those to our state representatives.
Mirror what the trustees have sent.
May, okay, thank you. Mirror what the trustees have sent, yeah, okay. Great.
Would you want one signature or would it look better to have unanimous?
I think we've got it, it, five signatures. That's what I remember from the packet unless others remember differently. Okay.
Yep, you do.
Any other questions? All right, I did things out of order. Discussion.
I agree with expanding the scope in terms of, or this, expanding the recipients. But I do think that the appeal to our state representatives and to the governor would be, you know, support for their lawsuit, you know, to restore the federal funding. But also, I would, I would, I would suggest that we also include a request for the state to not, you know, not, to suspend its cuts based on the fact that now that that will be compounded by the federal cuts.
Agreed.
So, so you're recommending possibly a differently designed?
So, so you're re- recommending possibly a, a differently designed letter maybe we entertain at the next council meeting?
Yeah, if we need to re-agendize, if we, if we need to re-agendize it, I'm just, I'm just saying that like, you know, I, and I would, you know, be, um, willing to, you know, defer to, in terms of the drafting, to, to the, to the library staff or city staff in terms of just adding a paragraph about, you know, state support as well as the federal support, so.
Mayor, if I may, um, Librarian Regan, do we have time to make those changes?
Thank you. Good question.
Um, yes, I have, the trustees are meeting on Monday, so they're gonna be signing their letters then. So I believe if we want to revamp the letter and have you sign at the next city council meeting, I, that, that would be great.
So I think it's three weeks because there's five Tuesdays this month, so that doesn't get into an issue with the May revise and all that?
No, and I think it will actually partner well with the, uh, Historical Preservation Society letters going out at the same time.
Okay.
But to me, to me, the federal letters, to our federal representatives, they make sense as is.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, no, I completely agree. Yeah. All right. Yeah, this is a, a very unfortunate and frustrating situation. I don't understand the logic behind it. Um, but, um, this is where we are. Um, if there's no other discussion, then I'll entertain a motion to, um, approve the, the federal letters.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, thank you all very much. We will now move on to our first public, uh, hearing item. Um, and this is on ordinance fourteen eighty-two, consideration of amending section five point zero four one, five point zero four point one one zero, payment of fees of chapter five point zero four, business licenses of title five. Attorney Garagosian.
Mayor, Mayor, Director Lynn is gonna present on, to save.
Wonderful.
To save our attorney's voice, uh, Director Lynn's gonna present on the next two public hearings.
Director Lynn, all yours.
Evening, Mayor, and members of the council. So the city council will be conducting a public hearing for the consideration of the ordinance fourteen eighty-two to amend the section five zero four point zero point one one zero, payment of fees of title five business license and regulations. So staff is proposing that, um, amend the language to align the business license fee payment requirements in January to the annual fee adjustment in July. The city's business license fee, along with the entire fee schedule, are adjusted for inflation at the start of each fiscal year in July first. However, the business license are required to be paid, um, the business license fee in January first, start of each calendar year. So the amendment will align those two days together to the fiscal year, July of e- every, um, fiscal year. The second recommended amendment is to rescind the provision for proration of business license fee and for the business license to, um, obtained mid-year and thereafter. The, um, reasoning behind that is, um, as you remember, last year, this time, the city conducted the user fee study. And the user fee study for business license was significantly reduced to, f- from three hundred and forty-two dollars to eighty-two dollars. So that fee is the minimum, um, staff time, cost recovery for the staff time, and, um, staff was not able to reduce for, even further. So the recommendation is to strike out the language for proration. And those are the two proposed amendments, and I'm happy to enter any questions you might have.
Questions?
Just a quick one. Uh, and the fee has been reduced, so that's great, but let, let's say somebody wants to comply and they open their business on June thirtieth. Um, they pay eighty-four dollars, and then on July first, they would then, just understand now the proration, proration's gone. The next day, they would have to then apply for another eighty-four dollars. I know it's kind of chump change in the business world, but I just wanna make sure I understand what getting rid of the proration does.
Right. So, um, we are proposing, so currently, the fee started January first, and it'll go until December twenty twenty-five. We're proposing that with this, the fee will extend it to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, to give the business, um, licensees that extra six month.
I, I'm, I'm just considering like a new business comes to town.
In the future, um, we do have this policy, if the business come in in May, we actually grant the entire year. So from May to the next year, um, of July thirtieth. So they get that extra month, two months.
So it's almost like a proration, proration, um, actually a discount.
Discount. It will be a discount if they apply early.
That's great, thank you.
I have a question. So, um, I've been hearing from the public that the new, uh, online version is very, very difficult. It takes a really long time, and they've even had to reach out for help. Have you, uh, can people still come to the front desk or come to your, your, um, area and do this in person, or does it have to be online?
Thank you for the question. So we do have, um, kiosk at the counter, and the staff can help you and guide you through the application process. We also have two iPads that you can take it and then sit down and take your time and fill all the informations. And once that is uploaded on the web-based platform, and the staff will process from there.
Maybe we should analyze then, if, if you guys are actually spending more time helping people do this, then your staff time isn't being accommodated in our new fee study.
Yeah, I, I would imagine that would be the growing pain
Yeah.
for the initial, um, setup, but in the future, it will, the staff time will gradually reduce.
Cause I think myself and the mayor went through the process already, um, for our businesses, but, um, once our information's in there, it'll auto-populate for, I, I don't know, but will it auto-populate for the next year?
That's correct.
Yeah, that makes, yeah.
Thank you. All, all we to discussion.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, then, uh, I'll go ahead and open this up for, uh, public comment. Madam Clerk, any public comment?
No speaker cards were submitted, Mr. Mayor.
All right. I'll close the public comment and bring it back to discussion. We'll turn directly to you.
Oh, I was just gonna make a snarky remark about maybe we could have applied for a grant to do some training in our library to, for the, for the, um, application.
For a business license.
But, you know, just another, another point to make about how, you know, the library can provide services beyond just, you know, checking out books. So, now, maybe not on point exactly for this, but, but, but related, because, I mean, that is something we've done in the past, right? Is give sort of webinars or, or trainings around these, these kinds of things.
Well, I, I, I think your point's spot on. I mean, that's what libraries are for, is to help train people to do things, and, you know, to help start businesses and help get them up off the ground, and so it's an incredibly valuable resource. So I, I think it, it's a, it's a good comment.
Snark aside, I mean, that is something we could think about, you know, um, Director Lynn, and, and, you know, about maybe doing one, you know, public, you know, sort of like, like we're doing the, the town hall for the new website, and maybe we could do it, you know, one town hall to have somebody just walk through, walk through the form and have, let people ask questions, um, that maybe could capture more than one person at a time at the counter.
They, they have a very handy trifold that they're currently handing out, um, which is, which is helpful. Um, but it's not, it's not to the level that you're suggesting. Yeah. I think that's a great, great idea.
Maybe a webinar?
Well, you know, I, I think one of the things that, that I heard from, from the Cosmont report was, you know, greater coordination between the, the city and, uh, the chamber. I think this is a great example of, of ways that we can partner together and really, um, help bring the businesses in and, and help get them, you know, help deepen the relationships with them between the city and, and particularly, you know, really, um, leverage the chamber.
I, 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 I think, uh, well, I'm sorry.
No, no, please.
I think what, uh, Mayor Protem mentioned wa- is a, is an excellent idea. Maybe the chamber or the city, um, do a CalTura video where you're online, recording your screen and setting up a fictitious business and go, just going through the process, and that just sits there and it could guide somebody through the process.
And they sign up for chamber, and it's on the chamber site.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just also thinking that one thing that the chamber could do is pair existing businesses with new businesses. And
Ooh.
to the extent that that could be helpful in terms of nav- navigating some of that process, you know, folks that have been around for a long time and are doing this every year.
Who, who is liaison to the chamber this year? Okay.
Myself, yeah.
Great. The, the next time that, that there's a chamber meeting, come up with that, I think it would be great to, to relay some of the, the thoughts here at the council.
Recommendation, not instruction.
Yes, thank you. Yes. Very, very well put. Um.
Great idea.
Okay. Any other discussion? Uh, this is a, uh, action item, so we need a motion?
A motion to approve as posted, as stated.
All right, do we have a second?
Is this for first reading? Or is this?
This is?
Is this?
It's an ordinance, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Amendment.
Didn't say, it didn't say first reading, but you are right. Okay. Second. So you're seconding the first reading. Got it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Now we'll go on to the second public hearing, so Director Lynn, you're our backup, so it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we'll start with an ex parte disclosure, if any.
Down here.
None.
None.
None. So, um, the city council this evening will be, um, considering a tentative parcel map, twenty-four oh one, map number eight four six five three for Matadorosa, located at seven hundred North Sunnyside Avenue. Before we review the application, I would like to provide a brief timeline and the related state statute. So the project timeline is that the city council approved the tentative track map for Meadows at the Bailey Canyon, um, last two years ago, May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. And during this time, the Meadows are, has already submitted tentative track map and are working on plan check for the track map. Now it's the congregation's responsibility to turn in a parcel map for the open space parcel. And there's two step for the review. Um, the first phase is the legislative approvals, which city council approved the general plan amendment, the zoning map, the specific plan, and we have entered the development agreement as well. So now we're at the second phase, which is the quasi adjudicatory approvals. And as I mentioned before, tentative track map has already been approved by city council in twenty twenty-four. And, uh, most recently, the city was granted the Carter Avenue winding Eastman for, um, public right-of-way in March eleventh, twenty twenty-five. So now the project's moving on to the parcel map. The applicant Matadorosa community is requesting the city council to consider the tentative parcel map application, which propose subdivisions of existing parcel into two parcels, creating a new open space parcel at the seven hundred North Sunnyside, which would be restricted for that purpose in perpetuity. As you know, the congregation of the Passion Matadorosa, New, New Urban West, and the city entered into a development agreement along with adopting the Meadows at the Bailey Canyon specific plan. In both document, the congregation is required to create an open space configuration, record a conservation Eastman against the north and most portion of the parcel, and apply for rezoning of that parcel to be the retreat center open space. The subdivision map act requires a parcel map application for any properties to be divided into four or fewer parcels. Depicted is the project boundary for Matadorosa Retreat Center is located north of the Meadow at Bailey Canyon specific plan area at the terminus of Sunnyside Avenue. To the west is the residential development, and to the east is the LA County Flood Control District, which includes the, um, County Debris Basin and the Bailey Canyon Park. So the existing parcel for the Retreat Center is approximately twenty-seven acres. And seven acres of the north and most property identified as number two will be dedicated to open space use in perpetuity. The remaining parcel identified as number one will remain for existing institutional use by the Matadorosa Retreat Center. Matadorosa also owns three more parcels to the north and to the northwest of the subject property. Um, so one parcel is directly north of the Retreat Center, and two more parcels that is northwest to it, and those two parcel is outside of the city boundary and are in the incorporated, in unincorporate county area. Those three parcel total approximately thirty-eight acres, and along with the new open space parcel, there are approximately forty-five acres of open space. A tentative track map is a type of subdivision map that shows the layout of the proposed boundary of the subdivision, including the description of each parcel. It also sets the conditions to grant existing Eastman for County Flood Control District, Southern California Edison, and city, um, utilities, city water main. Um, since we already went over the criterias for review process, I'd like to note that the project is qualified for a categorical exemption under CEQA for its class one existing facility, and also class seventeen for open space contracts and Eastmans for projects not proposing any development. City staff, along with, um, our engineers in public works, planning, land surveyors, co-fire of, officer, review the map and check for consistency against the development agreement and all the applicable code. And those are included in the conditions of approval. The proposed map is consistent with the Meadows at Bailey Canyon specific plan, the city's general plan to preserve and acquire natural open space, and aligned with the city's strategic plan to maintain the outdoor environment. The project site is physically suitable for the subdivision development and does not propose any development. Findings and CalFire subdivision findings are included in the staff report for the city council to make decision. The tentative track map parcel, um, application shall be denied if any of these findings are made. Staff was not able to make any findings, and this evening, the city council may adopt the city council resolution. City council resolution twenty dash two, twenty-three as presented, or adopt the city council resolution twenty-five dash twenty-three with modification, or recommend denial of the application identifying findings that supports the denial or the determination, or continue the public hearing. That concludes my report.
Couple of verifications. Twenty-five oh one, or one thinks it's twenty-four oh one, one thinks it's twenty-five, or presentation's wrong.
She's correct in her language, I think. Twenty-five, twenty-three.
Okay. And then, um, when you say for definition congregation, is that Matadorosa?
That's correct.
Are there questions from council?
Just thought, maybe it's a curiosity. Planer Lynn, so on, on the map, there's a, there's a bump out that's parcel one and parcel two that looks like it's within the city limits of Sierra Madre, but I think it's Park Vista Drive, which I think are Pasadena residents? Is there, is that their property that's kind of that, that bump out on the western side of the map toward, that's kind of straddling where we're contemplating lot A and lot B, or lot A and one and lot two? You see what I'm talking about, on the left, um, north-left side, on the western side, rather, toward the north?
You're saying where it...
Yeah, so the...
Yes.
The little indentation right there.
Correct, yes.
Um, it is a county, um, property.
Okay, so that's not being, there's no sub, the subdivision stops at that, that line, rather than all the way to that. If we had a north-south line of Sierra Madre, it kind of jogs over a little bit, okay?
Director Lynn, is there any county flood control or, or structures there, or infrastructure there?
I believe there, that is the county storm drain. Remember, there is a realignment from that storm drain to the new Sunnyside Avenue.
Which is not in the title. Just for clarification, so the, the title says tentative parcel map twenty-four oh one, but there's no resolution number in the subject matter, so it's only in the wording where it says, city council Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-three.
That's the, on the actual resolution.
Yes, correct, I'm just... So, okay.
It's just the subject matter, the subject matter is, it is, it is tentative parcel map twenty-four oh one.
Yeah, so that's why I was confused, is the resolution's not in the title, in the subject?
Yeah, it's because if you go down and look at attachment A, the, the resolution itself is twenty-five, twenty-three. It's a little confusing, but, but, you know, the, the key thing, and I think council member Garcia said it, is that the, I think the resolution is, is correct.
Yes.
And I have just one more question, I feel like I'm asking all the questions first, I'm sorry.
Please.
Um, attachment C, um, thank you for including it. Is it my, under, is it, is it correct for me to assume that that is because it's in a very high severity fire zone? It's kind of like what we were asked to do, but there was ambiguity regarding whether or not we need to send a letter to CAL FIRE? Uh, is that what this attachment C is doing, um, for purposes of why it's here?
Thank you for the question, that's exactly correct.
Okay.
So the requirement to submit the, um, CAL FIRE finding is either you're in the very high fire severity zone or you're in the state responsible area. And so we are the first that will qualify this for us to submit the findings. And, um, it was directed by our city attorney that it's, even though we're not proposing any development, but it's safe to, um, submit the findings to CAL FIRE. And our, um, fire co-officer has signed it, and then she actually, uh, made a note on it saying that there is no proposed development for this subdivision.
And it's in the LRA, not the SRA, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. And just, I just noticed there was two checkboxes in the bottom of, of three, and it, it gets a little confusing, but again, I, I think this is just cover our, um, our backs type of document, because like you said, my understanding, if we even needed to do this in the first place, it was if there was going to be development. So thank you city attorney for recommending that, and I'm, I'm happy it's in here, even though we might not need it.
Other questions, yes? Councilor Crebs?
Um, just for the public's benefit, um, can you please, um, explain your point that, that we are now in the quasi adjudicative, um, phase of this project, meaning that the discretion around the approvals that we are providing is, is a different standard? And, um, also that to not approve the, the tentative parcel map, that we have to actually make one of the, whatever it is, eight findings? Um, maybe just make that a little bit more, um, uh, clear for the, for the public in terms of the difference between the legislative phase, um, that we previously went through versus where we are now.
Thank you for the question. So the legislative phase do not have this five-hearing rule applied to it. So now we're in the quasi adjudicatory phase. Um, this application is bound by the five-hearing rule, and also it has to go through the planning commission review and the city council review. As for the findings, um, for its reasons, that the finding is in the negative. So if you make any of those findings, then, um, we cannot approve the tentative parcel map.
And we are, this is hearing two, because this, because the planning commission has already had a, a hearing, so this is now hearing two?
That's correct, so planning commission recommended approval of the tentative parcel map, and now it's coming to the city council, so there, this is public hearing number two.
And that five meeting, that five-hearing rule applies specifically to this, um, this tentative parcel map review? Or is that five meetings with respect to all of the various filings during this adjudicative process?
Um, the five-hearing rule applies to this application.
Thank you.
Great questions, other questions? Um, so if I remember correctly, uh, with the conservation easement, there's someone that holds the property in fee, and the other one has the easement on it. Um, we will hold the property in fee, the city will hold it in, in fee, and then the, the, um, the easement i- is by, is it the center, uh, the, who's, who, oh, who is holding the conservation easement?
Um, so the purpose of the structure of this, when we, um, went over the development agreement, is for Metodoroza to continue to own the property, so they have to maintain the hillside for the city. The city, um, is at its max capacity, we don't have the capacity to maintain the hillside.
And, and who owns the easement then?
Um...
It's not an easement, right, it's just o- open space.
Yeah, it's where we...
Designated open space.
Designating...
So it's not, there isn't a conservation...
New lot that's gonna be...
I thought there was a conservation easement on this.
That was one structure we had discussed, but I think this is where we ended up.
Okay.
I could be wrong, but I, I... That's what I remember.
I think that we're zoning this, the limitation is, is baked into the, you know, the nature of the, of the lot and the, and the parcel, so that, that we didn't have to grant an easement.
Got it, okay, I thought I remember reading the easement in there, okay, thank you for that clarification. Um, and then on slide eight, so the, the two parcels that you have there that are just north of Metodoroza, so that's not Sierra Madre property, right? That, that is LA County properties, that's beyond our, our, our legal limits?
So the one that's directly north of Metodoroza that is owned by Metodoroza but in city of Sierra Madre.
So it's not owned by the city of Sierra Madre?
The west is owned by Metodoroza but in the county unincorporated area.
Okay, so, so the one straight up that is twenty acres, that's within the city, that Metodoroza owns it, but, and it's, and it's zoned open space. And then the city has the next parcel over, what's that zone?
That's zone open space as well.
They're both, oh, okay, so, but the city owns that, that parcel, so Metodoroza owns the, the other two, and, and the one on the left is in LA County. Okay, great, thank you for that clarification. Any other questions? All right, uh, this is a, um, public hearing item, so now we'll open up to, uh, public comment. Madam Clerk, is there, do you have any comment cards for public comment?
Mr. Mayor, no comment cards were submitted.
Did we receive anything by email on this, on this item?
Uh, no emails were submitted to the city, uh, to the city clerk's office.
Okay, great, so we'll close the public comment period and, uh, open up for discussion, any discussion?
Kind of a no-brainer.
Seems straightforward to me as well. So hearing that, um, yeah, I'll entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we are on to our discussion item, um, and this is one, uh, I think we've got our Assistant City Attorney and Chief Bartlett on Resolution twenty-five, twenty-five.
Assistant City Manager.
I am so sorry, thank you for that correction.
I always get his title wrong.
I don't think we have an Assistant City Attorney, do we?
No.
I saw, I went somewhere, I got, I got attorney somewhere in that, so I don't know.
Just trying to make Alex feel included from a distance.
There we go.
Give me Galoree.
There we go. Thank you so much. Mr. Hernandez, can you help bail me out?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of the city council. At your direction, staff evaluated the creation of a deputy chief community risk reduction officer. Uh, and before you today is the consideration of Resolution twenty-five, twenty-five, which authorizes the addition of the sworn confidential exempt role for the fire department. Uh, the alternatives are to adopt Resolution twenty-two-five, twenty-five twenty-five, uh, not to adopt Resolution twenty-five, twenty-five, or to continue the item and provide further direction to staff. Uh, this position will serve as a second-in-command, uh, within the department, leading fire prevention, community risk reduction, and public education initiatives. Uh, also, it will oversee fire inspections, plan review, emergency response operations, personnel management, and policy development. And as the acting direct, uh, department's public information officer, while also supporting long, long-term relate, um, leadership succession planning. And with that, I will turn it over to Chief Bartlett for some additional information on the position.
Thank you to Assistant City Manager Hernandez, and, uh, good evening, council. Um, I welcome this opportunity to present to you, um, the potential for a national key movement forward in, in the fire department, to be honest with you, um, in, uh, in supporting our, our capabilities and, uh, and being able to provide the service for the, for the community. Um, just to kind of elaborate on what Assistant City Manager had presented to you, uh, that's, that's kind of the high-level overview of, of what that position will be. And to be honest with you, uh, what I've tried to do is get creative. Uh, we have multiple needs within the department, as, uh, was indicated in our master plan and, and the like. Um, we do have the need for a second-in-command, a deputy chief, as well as somebody within community risk reduction. Um, I realize that with fiscal constraints that we have in the city, that's not going to happen in the near future. So, um, trying to find a hybrid solution to that and, and kind of morphing both of those positions into one. There are some people out there that I, I, uh, it's going to take a, basically, somebody mentioned to me before, a unicorn, uh, but I do believe those unicorns are out there, um, and I think it's a great opportunity for somebody to come in, basically, and, and revamp and, or, or fire prevention has existed, but to bring in a, uh, community risk reduction component of it. That is, that is kind of where prevention is truly moving, to be honest with you, within our industry. And, um, I, I, I'm looking forward to bringing, hopefully bringing somebody in to, to set up that program for us. As Assistant City, City Manager Hernandez mentioned, uh, just to kind of re-elaborate on, um, on some of this, uh, this is absolutely, um, following with the city's strategic plan alignment. Um, specifically, uh, to outline a few of them, uh, goal number one are organizational sustainability and succession planning, uh, for staff retention. Goal number two, uh, under, uh, public safety are fire readiness and risk reduction. And then goal number five, environmental responsibility through vegetation management and fire-safe construction, um, through home hardening. So, um, we are, again, trying to expand upon what we've set out as, as an organization, as a city strategically, and we're trying to align with that. Um, the role itself, um, like I said, will be the rank of a deputy chief, giving them the ability, it would be a sworn position, giving them the ability to, uh, truly, uh, deal with personnel issues, for one. Um, absolutely step in place should I be absent or unavailable, to not only, uh, continue with the program of prevention and community risk reduction, but also general operations. And so, um, they would, they will also, um, lead the city's fire prevention, code enforcement, emergency preparedness, and public education, public education programs. Um, this, this role was actually recommended within our fire department master plan to address gaps in risk mitigation, emergency communication, and leadership succession. Trying to go through some of my notes that I had. The, uh, the city's, uh, recent experiences, to, to even go back to include the Bobcat, but most notably, uh, the Eaton Fire, um, although we did extremely well, uh, we did extremely well with the staff that we had. And, um, but it did, it did expose some vulnerabilities in our public safety infrastructure that I believe this position, uh, is designed to correct. And, uh, a couple of examples of those would be, um, basically, uh, currently limited fire prevention and code enforcement capabilities, um, are within our department. So we, we lack a dedicated leadership for inspections, plan reviews, and vegetation compliance, and overall reliance currently on contracted, uh, inspectors. Uh, we also, um, there's inadequate command redundancy. Uh, there's no, no formal second-in-command, um, which creates an oper- operational risk to myself as the fire chief if I'm unavailable. Uh, complex incidents also, uh, for instance, Eaton Fire, uh, requires continuity in leadership and decision-making. We, um, there's gaps in the public outreach and emergency communication, as, as, again, we did our very best during that incident, uh, but it was a, a time management nightmare, if you will, for a lot of things, trying to be at, uh...
The places once.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so, on, on that subject, what did you do? If you, because you can't stay awake twenty-four hours a day for four days. So what did you do when you, well, you might have, I guess, but what did you do then if you can't do that or if you had to go to the meetings at another place? How did you handle being in two places at once? Who, who else could you put in charge since you don't have that?
Um, again, we're very creative in this city, and, and in the department is no different. Um, I was here twenty-four hours for the first two days, so for forty-eight hours straight, I was here. Uh, but that's not sustainable in any means, nor is it, um, ideal for the service we need to provide for this community. Um, at that time, right, we, as with all city staff that, that's putting in that kind of time, uh, judgment can be impaired, uh, decision-making can be impaired, and, uh, that truly just trickles down to safety and, and, and it's not acceptable. Uh, we, our community and everybody deserves the best that we can provide.
So I want to understand the structure, I think, I think, based on that, so it's chief and then three captains? And if three captains show up, who's in charge, right?
Correct, and so, um, don't forget in all of this, we still had to do daily operations. There's medical calls that are going out at the same time, and we still have to deal with those. There's still other calls for service along with the, the disaster that we were facing. Um, so we had to act quickly with what we had, with whom, whom we had. Um, and thankfully, we had our EMS coordinator, who is also a sworn position, who jumped in, um, as a, as a quasi second-in-command.
What rank is that?
She, uh, is a captain.
So question then, the captain versus...
Hold on, hold on, hold on one second. Do you have other parts of your presentation? I want to make sure you have the time to get to your presentation before we jump on, uh, in you with, with, with questions. These are really important questions, I want to make sure they get asked. But I also want to give you the opportunity to cover all the things that you've got in your notes. Are there other things that you haven't had a chance to cover?
There are some other things, sure, but I, I think this format, if it suits the council, I'm, I'm completely good with it.
Good, I just want to make sure we're, we're getting everyone's needs met, so, Mayor Protem, please go ahead.
The reason I ask that is because if you are not in charge, and, you know, I, I'm from looking at this chart, there's other departments that have a second in charge, so your second in charge is a captain, you're a, a officer chief. Is the, what, what training from the state is required to be at, say, the position where you are in charge of a captain? Because if she's second in charge, she's the same rank as your on-duty captain.
Correct.
Okay, so what, what state training there, is there difference between that?
There, there, there is numerous training. Um, there's, there's chief officer certified training through the state fire marshal, and there's executive, uh, chief officer training as well. Um, none of my staff, uh, besides myself, have those, those qualifications certifications. Um, no lack, uh, or, or no dig on them, that's just not their position nor their rank.
Yeah.
Um, and so, it's... And so, it's, it's just adjust, right? We have to implement and adapt and overcome to make sure that we can handle everything that we had to handle, and that's, that's what we did. Fortunately, we do have some great staff, good critical thinkers, management skills, and, and we're able to handle it. But that's, that's exactly how we handled it, not ideally, but we made it work.
Thank you. It was, it was amazing. I'm not, I'm not judging that, I'm just saying that there's a big difference between those two steps.
Yes.
Other questions?
And so, at the same time, to, to kind of, what, what I had to do is I, unfortunately, I had to step away from the operations, daily operations. And that's where our, our daily shift captains, I, I put that on them, which is a heavy lift for them. They're making decisions that is out of, out of their comfort zone, for sure, potentially. And then, you know, really, it, it, that's management oversight that should be making a lot of that decision, not, not a supervisory position. However, we adjusted.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, just, I think it's a good point to understand the structure. So, in an emergency like that, like we saw, we had, can't remember which city I should, because I'm grateful, they came in, they were running our daily calls for us, I think for the first twenty-four hours, or maybe the second twenty-four hours. Structurally, how, how does that work? Do they have their own captain or assistant chief running that? Or optimally, we would have one of our staff members instructing them on our local, on our local calls, right?
It's a great point. We thankful with, with the great partnerships that we have. City Manager Reynoso actually had the communication with the City of Santa Fe Springs and their city manager, and their chief reached out to me and asked how they can help. They provided an engine to, probably somewhere in the second day, not quite sure of, of the timeframe on that too, but to relieve my staff, really, when they, they came off the line after almost forty hours there, or off the fire for a continuous forty hours, just to get some rest. And they ran the calls, normal calls for service in the city. But it goes through our dispatch, it's a captain-level incident on most of these things. So, it's a, they, they basically have command and supervision of those calls, medical calls and, and the like. If it, we didn't have any, but should there have been something that was a greater level of an incident, we would have got an incident commander as well from Verdugo, from, from our area agencies through the automatic aid.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other questions from council? Anything else did you like to cover?
Just, just some additional things for, for consideration is, like I said, the, we also have, like I said, the, the gaps in the public outreach, where we, we don't have a designated PIO or, or Public Information Officer within the department. I feel that is a, a very important component to what we need to do, as we have heard from our community throughout the city, staff and, and organization is that we need to communicate, we need to communicate as much as we can. With that just being me, I, I, I just can't morph into all the places I need to be at one time. So, having somebody dedicated with the experience on the fire side, to be able to answer questions on the technical side and provide confidence to the community that we are handling the situation and mitigation, mitigating all concerns, I think is, is another key aspect to, to what we do. As well as lacking of sustained cotton, or community education on wildfire and emergency readiness. So, that position would, would also be covered through a PIO type of, of, position, if you will. We also are not, have, you know, we have concerns of underutilized data for prevention planning. There's, there's fire, fire data that, that is not being strategically used to target high-risk zones. We just don't have the staff or the time to actually do that with whom we have. And a proactive, data-informed prevention strategy is needed. And then, also, our WUI, or Wildland Urban Interface, has obviously a specific vulnerability. And we know that Sierra Madre's geographical place is, now, as we're going to soon find out, some, for some future presentations coming up in the next council meetings, according to our hazard zones, not only the very high hazard fire severity zones, but now to include high and moderate. And then, there's currently, there's no current leadership role specifically tasked with managing the WUI-focused programs like brush clearance, defensible space enforcement, and home hardening education. So, this, this position would enable the Fire Department to shift from reactive response to a comprehensive proactive risk reduction model. The position would, again, be responsible for leading inspections and code enforcement, coordinating public education and risk reduction events. They would also act as a liaison between our volunteer organizations, particularly CERT, that is already formed and established, but needs somebody that can actually be attentive to them all the time. Right now, we have a shift captain that is only here basically two days out of the week, and their, their schedules don't always line up with CERT. And another thing is the liaison towards the Fire Safe Council that we are trying to re-establish and get going, as well as the Firewise Communities. Lastly, basically, you know, there would be the question of what, what, what if we don't create this position? I, I feel that delaying this role means a continued strain on leadership, limited public education capacity, and missed opportunities for proactive wildfire prevention, emergency communication, and leadership development. And that's the end of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any, any further questions.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Mayor, if, if I may add to the Chief's and Assistant City Manager's presentation, this is the first step, and basically a two-step process. Improving the position creates a position, doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to go out and recruit for tomorrow. The next step in the process is to identify a funding source so that we can fill this position. So, this simply creates a position, then we have to determine how we're going to fund it long-term.
Thank you for that clarification. All right. This is a public hearing or a public item, so I think we need to open it up for a public, you know, it's a discussion item. So, do we need to open it up for, for, okay. Open it up for, for, for public comment. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
Mr. Mayor, there were no speaker cards submitted.
Great. We'll bring it back. Discussion, any thoughts from the council?
Wholeheartedly support this, especially if this leads us to a Firewise Community, the, the potential reduction in savings for our residents and for their insurance costs. I think residents would be happy with that, obviously. And obviously, the whole leadership structure, it really opens things up to be a better-prepared emergency services.
Well, and, and speaking of leadership, Chief, I'd like to, to applaud you for your leadership in, in pushing this forward and creating the structure, implementing your strategic plan, getting us the, you know, a, a best-in-class Fire Department. And I'm hoping that we'll be able to get that funding sometime soon to be able to have that. I think, you know, the, the fire was very clear that we needed to have that type of, of resource. Other discussion? Yeah?
Yeah, I was, I was glad that the City Manager, that was going to be one of my questions or clarifications. I mean, I, I just want the public to be aware that this is solely the, the intention to create this position and that, I mean, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, it's currently in our, in our budget situation, we are not actually prepared or able to hire to fill this position because of the fiscal constraints. And so, I just, you know, I, I think I completely agree with, wholeheartedly supporting this, the creation of this position. But, you know, I'm cautiously optimistic that it can be filled. But, I mean, I just want people to not get ahead of, of where we're at in terms of the fiscal impact, because as excited as we are, you know, we have to figure out a way to pay for it.
And I, I, I one hundred percent agree. We're hearing from all of our residents with the changes and, and the number-one safety and the one, number-one priority of, of us as city councils to make sure we have a safe city. And with that, this provides us such a safer, safer situation, as we saw in our last disaster. And thank goodness, you have such amazingly trained individuals, and, and you have a lot of unicorns in your department right now. This also gives you the time to find another unicorn that fits with our city, as part of our family.
So, so I, I don't think this is an item that we need to vote on, is it?
Yes.
Oh, it is?
I move to adopt Resolution twenty-five twenty-five, amending the classification plan and salary matrix, establishing the Deputy Fire Chief hyphen Community Risk Reduction Officer position.
That's actually an M-dash.
It's an M-dash? Not an N-dash?
I don't know which dash it is. I think it's M.
It's not a half-N? Like a half-N dash? No, no? But anyway, in, in, in the, and again, in the spirit of a true Sierra Madre position, wearing multiple hats. But that's my motion.
Second. All in favor? Excellent. I have gotten a little note here that we want to go back and revisit the Institute for Museum and Library Services item, because there's been a real-time update that I think the council would like to hear. So, Librarian Regan, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor Parkhurst, Mayor Pro Tem, Low and our honorable City Council. This is actually a positive thing I'm coming with. It's actually for our Sierra Madre Library Foundation. We were just notified that we were awarded through the Pasadena Tournament of Roses Foundation, thirty-five thousand dollars for the F F and E for the teen room, which is a brand-new room in the renovated library, so I just wanted to know.
And their funding source is not the federal government?
Correct. So, as you know, the Library Foundation, the Sierra Madre Library Foundation is fundraising for our furniture fixtures and equipment, along with our Friends of the Library that already kicked in about seven-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand. So, at this point, with Friends of the Library and the foundation, and some money that the library has set aside, we're at almost a million for F F and E.
Wonderful. Thank you for sharing. All right, now we'll move on to our final agendas items, youth members on boards and commissions. Do we, do we need a quick break, or? Okay, great.
I'm going to take one too. Should we just take a five?
Why don't we take a, just a five-minute break, and we'll come back at about five, eight-twenty or so. There we go. All right, let's then cause the order, and we'll do the rest item. And now that we have a city clerk, it is yours. I believe you have this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the December tenth, twenty-twenty-four City Council meeting, the Mayor Parkhurst and the City Council requested that the staff return to a future meeting, advising on the process for establishing or adding youth commissioners to existing commissions. The report prepared by the, by city staff is a receiving file report that details the current process for establishing youth commissioners. Youth commissioners were previously utilized when City Council, when the commissions had different makeups. And so, in twenty-twenty, when the City Council directed staff to change the makeup of the, of the, the commission. directed staff to change the makeup of the, of the commissions to be uniform and match the city council from various numbers to five straight across the board, one of the eliminations was the youth commissioner on the Community Services Commission. At that time, the Community Services Commission was the only commission that had a youth commissioner. So that position was eliminated. One of the reasons that the city council chose to eliminate that position was because youth commissioners serve a one-year term, or at that time were serving a one-year term. And so the commissions and city staff were recruiting for youth commissioners. Every six to nine months, we're constantly recruiting for youth commissioners and then the commissioners would serve one-year term. The other challenges that were experienced by city staff and the commissions were that oftentimes the high school students, which is what they were, would miss meetings due to commitments, academic commitments and other school commitments, part-time jobs. And so on occasion, there were issues with quorums. So one of the considerations that cities, the city council made in twenty-twenty when they adopted the new ordinance that modified the municipal code was to bring the commissions down to five with, without any youth commissioners at that time. So the process has been in place now since twenty-twenty. It is within the council's purview to make any changes or modifications to the existing process. If the council so desires, they can direct staff to return to a future meeting with a draft of any changes. But at this time, the report before you is for receiving file. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Great. Thank you very much. Questions from the council?
Which commissions had youth commissioners prior?
Previously, it was Community Services Commission. Adjusted, only that commission, yes, ma'am.
All right. Any other questions? All right. I, I think I'll continue with the process and see if there's any public comment.
Mr. Mayor, there were no speaker cards submitted for this item.
Yeah, I see no one coming forward here. Come back for, for discussion. So, so the reason I put this on the agenda, it was that, it was a request that came from the Community Services Commission. So that was part of the driver of, behind it. I'll open it up to thoughts and comments from the council.
Did they have a request, specific request?
I think that they wanted to have, to open it back up to having a, the option of a youth commissioner. And I think we've had this discussion before, at least sometime, sometime on my time on council, I think it came up.
Yeah, when I was mayor, I brought it up, yeah.
Oh, there we go. Yeah, that's right. Thank you for the reminder.
I would prefer not revisiting the technical, very technical conversations I think we've had on a couple of occasions around quorum and number of, you know, number of commissioners and things like that. So I really appreciated the staff reports' suggestion that there might be alternative ways to bring youth representation with respect to our commissions. And that, that was a recommendation about perhaps looking into an ambassador program or some sort of, I, I also know that many nonprofits have like an advisory board that, that don't necessarily have voting rights or have, you know, effect on quorum. But to the extent that, my assumption coming from the Community Service Commission is that they would like to have more input from, you know, a major constituency that they serve. Obviously, the senior, seniors have their own commission and then obviously they, they coordinate between those two commissions. That, I know, another thing we could think of, we, we could explore in addition to the ambassador program would be having some sort of advisory board or advisory person or people, youth, youth advisors. You know, and I could see it being helpful for other, other, you know, the library would be another one. It seems pretty obvious that it would be, that could benefit from having some youthful, youthful voices. But frankly, maybe, maybe all but planning could.
Yeah, and I, I think there was a problem, you know, recruiting as, as Madam City Clerk mentioned. The last, the last ones I remember were PJ and George Cibrel on the commi, and I don't know whether there was any between them or any subsequent to them. I could be wrong.
PJ Canterbury?
No, PJ Cibrel.
Oh, oh, okay.
So I, I don't remember any since them and that they're, they've graduated college. You know, I guess, you know, this happened five years ago anyway. The twenty-twenty council did this. But I, I don't recall them being voting members anyway. I remember them being part of the discussion, but I don't think it creates quorum problems if they're not a voting member.
I remember that too. They weren't, they didn't have.
They were advisory and they were part of the discussion as well, yeah.
So City of Glendale, Pasadena both say ex, they use the words ex officio student commissioner. And they have one for natural resources, community services and libraries.
But I think in the advent of more schools looking for their students to graduate with, with service hours, this is a great opportunity for a lot of our residents to get, to grab service hours in a meaningful way.
I think the ex officio idea is great.
That's great.
I'd support that.
Well, I also think, I'm just thinking back to tonight when the YMCA presentation, they have that program that he was, they were talking about with the high school students. That's sort of the, the model UN is for the middle school and they have like model legislature, model something.
I wrote it down.
For, for the high school. And this seems like a nice, you know, intersection between folks that might be participating in that program to then, you know, including that program perhaps a, an advisory position or an appointed position on, on various boards.
I really like that idea. Yeah.
And Pasadena High School has a law and public service academy.
Yeah.
Well, and, and, you know, whether it's ex officio or ambassador, I think that's kind of where my mind is at. I think that, that, you know, not making them a voting member, not making them subject to quorum, but also giving the opportunity, we really need to keep, you know, we really want to get the youth involved in civic duties and, and being part of a, you know, understanding the, the rules of order and, you know, what these commissions do and what the impact they can have. I think it's a, it's a real positive. So I'm, I'm, I'm completely for supporting it. And I, I think as we do that, I think, you know, I heard the collaboration with, with the high schools, you know, not just the, the public school, but any of the private schools in, in the area. I think, you know, other service units like the, this, you know, the, the boys and the Girl Scouts troops as well could be an option as well because I think, you know, they also have service hours that they need to get for their various badges and ranks. So I, I think there's an opportunity there to, to have a good pool to bring people in. And then, then we, you know, they may not be here very long, but then they launch with some, some really valuable knowledge and skills that take, they can take forth in this world.
That's what I was thinking, that pairing with an existing organization that has infrastructure like the YMCA or, you know, the, the, the academy at, in PUSD is that that creates a bit of a pipeline to, to address the concern about this constant need to like, to search people out, right? So if we have kind of a partnership or a couple partnerships that are helping feed, you know, into the, into the program, it, it, to me, it, it reduces the, the burden on staff to constantly be, you know, advertising and reviewing, you know, reviewing applications and things like that. That would could maybe help shift or share some of that, some of that burden. And we could think about whether or not it would need to necessarily be someone who is a Sierra Madre resident because, I mean, frankly, we get applications for boards and commissions outside of residents as well, which we have not required, you know, we've not required folks to be a resident.
I think Glendale says you have to be a resident or attend a Glendale school.
Right. And we don't have a high school, so we'd have to probably make that a.
And we'd like to include private schools as well, probably.
Hundred percent.
To, to your point on the YMCA, I think it's brilliant. I really do. I, I think having someone that's point on it, they can help, help do it. It deepens our relationship with the Y and it relieves any additional burden on staff. You know, and if the Y is, is willing to do it and blend it as part of the program, I think it, you know, I think it's a great ask to see if they're, they're interested in it.
Is it only open then to the Y, those people in those programs then?
I, I think it would, well, I don't know enough about the Y program that they've got for ninth through twelfth graders. To, to me, I don't know if it fits in that program or if it's a separate program or if it's a sub-part of the program. I think that's part of the, what I would want staff to come back with. Is, is just some feedback on, is it an option? Is it a fit? Is it, you know, you know, what are, you know, to exactly your point, what are any concerns or constraints on it? But having someone else that can help run point on it, deepening our relationship with the Y, I, I, I think that's a, a great place to start.
I think the concern would be excluding a resident that's not part of that organization.
That's what I'm worried about.
Yeah. No, no, I, I, I think we want to keep, so the, the idea would be to keep it as broad as possible. So, so if there's limits on that, I, I would agree with both of you that, that that would make it less attractive.
Although frankly, I think we should also be helping Y, the Y, you know, recruit people for their program too. So if we had kind of a combo, it might also broaden the scope of their program.
Yeah.
Could be, yeah, win-win.
So can I say, Community Services, Natural Resources and Library. I don't think the seniors need a teenager.
Oh, I don't think they would mind it.
I, I guess from my, from my perspective, I, I, I would leave it to the commissions. That, you know, it, because they're the ones that are going to have to, to, to help set the agenda and, and integrate the person in. And I think that, you know, I want to give them the, the choice to be able to do those types of things.
Or the applicant, right? If the applicant can make a case for why they, their voice might be useful on X, Y, Z. Hey, I mean, I would be all ears to hear how a high school student could help with planning.
Yeah.
I don't think I would help planning, though.
But, but I think that's right. I mean, I, I, I think it's, it's, you know, we, we let them be the self-governing boards and, and let them hear it. And if, yeah, if a student goes, goes for it, yeah, absolutely.
Mayor, this would not be a mayor appointment. This would be board appointment.
Yes, it's a great question. I, I, I think we should make, make it a, a commission appointment. So make it, let them be able to do that. So we, we empower them, we, we select them, but then this is something that they get to, to get to run with.
It probably depends on the nature of the partnership, right? It probably depends on what, like if we do partner with the Y, sort of what that looks like.
Yeah. It's, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, could I get clarification on the council's direction for this?
Please.
Is the council asking us to return to a, a future meeting with a, an official program? Or are you just, or is the council asking us to just leave it up to the commissions to select advisors or ambassadors?
I, I, the, the way I'm hearing it and the way I'm interpreting it is, I, I, I think we are asking staff to come back with some ideas on, on ways to implement this. And I think that, that you've laid out, one is that we just say it's an option for commissions. The other is it's a more formal program that the Y is interested in running. I think that the idea is that, at least what I'm hearing and channeling is that we don't want to add something else to staff to be able, the, the city staff has to be able to run other than help us get it, you know, the initial setup and the startup of it and direction of it, kind of, you know, the, 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 the binders on it, the, the edges on it, and then let it run from there.
Okay, staff, prepare a recommendation for a future council meeting.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
I don't think that's to be limited to the Y, to the Y either. I mean.
No, 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 right.
PUSD, you know, the Public Service Academy. I mean, there's probably a number of different organizations that could all work together or, you know, or it might be a better fit.
I'm doing it for Glendale. As an employee of the district.
Okay. And, 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 you know, use whoever you think in staff could help, you know, come up with this. I think there's a number of creative people that come to my mind that could help create it. But I, I defer to you all to, to think through who, you know, who, who you would, you know, throw this to and have them create it.
Thank you. We're very fortunate that the liaisons are very in-tuned with the needs of the commissions. And so I can only imagine that the liaisons would have significant input.
Perfect. Excellent. All right. I think we've completed the, the feedback there. So we're then on to the final thing on the agenda, which is items for future meetings. Is there, are any?
What?
Something I missed.
No, you're good. You're, no kidding.
Am I, am I, am I mixing things up again?
No, no, we're good.
So are there any suggestions or recommendations or requests for our future agendized items?
I have one. So when I went to the Prop thirty-six implementation forum, one of the needs that our supervisor Catherine Barger has been, been vocal about is that, I don't know if you guys knew this, that, that Men's Central Jail will be closing and there's no alternative being put up in its place. That would be forty-five hundred inmates that would be placed into our system in the cities surrounding us, which would cause Pasadena jails, Glendale jails also to have to be slightly changed if they have to become a longer holding cells. If they're as far away from, from the courthouse, busing becomes a really interesting thing on transportation. So the request was when she has her agendized meetings and she's already had two, or the supervisors board has already had two, they're only hearing voices from one side and they really want to hear voices from the local officials on how this will impact our city. So that was one part of the agenda. The other part is that with Prop thirty-six, that's going to really change the alternative to having inmates and having prisoners because you need to have an alternative. And the alternative is mental health care and addiction treatments. We don't have that right now. We only have fifty beds in LA County. When we previously in the nineteen-seventies had to three hundred to a thousand beds, depending on the, the era, because we had facilities for this type of care. Now we don't have that. So if we're mandating Prop thirty-six to happen with alternatives, exactly how are we going to do that in our areas if we don't have a place for them to go for treatment?
So briefing on Prop thirty-six.
Yes.
And, and action items associated with it.
Yes, because Catherine Barger would like to have a care facility put in the place of Men's Central Jail.
Okay. Is that clear enough, Mr. City Manager?
I shared the notes with you, so.
You want us to provide a receiving file on the impacts of?
Prop thirty-six. And how we can support our, our supervisors. Correct. And then how we can support our supervisors if, if needed.
So, so it's, I'm hearing it's more than just a receiving file.
Correct.
Because there's, there's more, there's an action item of potentially council support or?
Letters of support.
Okay.
Letter of support.
For Catherine Barger for, we'd have to word that, basically to support her for the alternative to closing Men's Central Jail.
I would think that we could piggyback, I mean, since our, we don't, obviously don't have our own jail facilities and we use Pasadena, my guess is that we would coordinate with whatever Pasadena's thoughts are on this because the impact to us is really the impact on them. Because we don't have our own direct.
Because we use them the most, yeah.
We could probably, I mean, I don't want to say piggyback, but like obviously we should be talking with them because that's the most, in terms of the jail.
Situation.
All right. Anything else for future agenda items? Then we are adjourned to May, what is it, the second Tuesday in May, whatever that day is.
Thirteenth.
May thirteenth. All right. Thank you so much.